[S01] Glory to God, glory to God, glory to God.
Praise the Lord. Saththathu othu jomman aravikum, kujinair jommanu.
Indha maathvekaila andavare, neer andavare, egal osus vetha andavare, unna samakthil kaanamudiyana bakkithin slakkithin neer engalke teppi kaagamakka nandiseltukrom andavare. Perstutha pidave, indha maale velaila andavare, ennat thaevela odu unna pilligal vandhirkarargal enbadhi engalke thariyadharacha. Ananal neer thirigandavare, visuvasithu pilligal andavare. Appa ipparu pettukondu kadandusillai, egal devantaame anukkaragam seyvanama chabikkrom andavare. Sabayile varathadappattu pilligala andavare, sikramaga andavare, kundu vandhuserpiyara andavare. Appa pilligala andavare, oru thaagathai tharum andavare, virupathai tharum, asseetha tharum andavare. Appa indha naaliile andavare, enna anna andavare, pilligala andavare, enna anna karigalke kurithu varugarargal enbadhi andavare, unmakku manmunbaga vaykkrom andavare. Appa innum rachikkappadaadu chenangal yeraalam undanandavare engal kodumgalile. Esivin naamathinaal andavare, avergal yaavam andavare, evan udhaisayavakrom andavare. Appa itto rachikkakkuadaappadi unna karam kurigupogavellai, kettakkuadaappadi manthmagavellai duvasikkromai. Esivin naamathinaal andavare, innam andavare, ka visuvasak kodumgalile irukkara, yella uravinargalum sundambattangalum pilligalum andavare. Appa avaravargal viitri leedikranda andavare, yaaari innum rachikkappadavillaiyo, engal devantaame unna pilligala anganda andavare, saatchulla vaarki vaandha andavare. Avergalke munmayathira idhanda andavare, avergal rachikkandavare, ivargal vadi vasali eerpadichikravanamai. Neer andavare, neer vathasak sayuvanamai chavikkrom andavare. Indha naaliile andavare, norugundai irudhey thoda andavare. Appa perstaviyana andavare, kayangal kattai aarum illaiyandra andavare. Aaruklilillaamal, thairdalillaamal andavare, appa yaaariyadam solvomindra andavare. Thueratho odu vandhirkaram unna pilligal udii andavare, irudhaythi nee paap... Kupparapilligal kaandavare, naali... Oru periyaa andavare, rachipiyam andavare, vidutalayam pilligalke kattalidavanamai. Perstutha pidave, indha naaliile andavare, oru munai thodik, aru munai varaayum andavare, unna deva prasannam andavare, kolakshabikkrom andavare. Appa perstaviyana andavare, munindra uyyastegira, unna uyyarakalini raksayathu kudukandavare. Avergal vaialindhu kudukadura, oorvarthiyam andavare. Rema varthiyaga kadandu vara, engal devantaame anukkaragam seyvanama chabikkrom. Andavare, thiridakaliile andavare, appa oru manapattavargalakka, sindhanile oru manapattavargalaya kaanappattu andavare. En devantaame angirukira varthiyaa andavare, neer avargalke kodutha andavare. Adhe engalke vathpoorudha andavare, naangal adhyaa andavare, visuvasithin nambikkoode pettukondu, unna naamathai magimipadthe engal devankrubi seyveeraga. Uru visayakkuudanandavare, engal ratthathai telikkrom andavare. Esivin rattham chayam, perstaviyana andavare, esivin rattham chayam, esivin rattham chayam. Indha mulu vaalakathai andavare, unna ratthakottaklaai moodimarathu padukakka venamay chabikkrom. Katharindha naaliile oru periyaa aruvadhey thanthu, indha naamathai magimipadthiveeraga. Thudigina magimay makke eradukkrom, radukkrom mitkromay irukreeshu krushivin naamath... It, planat...
Amen, amen. Indha jommanu, indha jommanu, chira. Sagathurigal yaaral jommanu, oru yappadugulis, but... Dhanidya ko dhanidya jommanu, praise the Lord.
Nandhitoodu nagalumay thudikkrom, kathaave, indha naaruudhe aaradhani kaak, nagal namil chabikkrom. Naali nadakkara aaradhani kaaku, ippoordeen nagal aithathoodu kaanappadani, udavichivereaga. Andavari katha daame, neetcheethinathile nadamda, arputamana oru aasidvaadaman, andavare kutthathirkaaku, unmakku nandicheltukrom, raja. Am andavari esukrutha, andha naaliyai, avaradi vasanathai kettak vandha, oorvar pilligalum thirumbipogumbodhu, driptiyai booshithinay, anupinay, adupole, neetchundhi engalai driptiyai booshitha, arupinay, adupoleve, indha naaliyilum, naaliyilum kodak kathaave, indha koottangal mikum aasidvaadamaa, engalukum, engal sabay makkalukum, andavare, irak kettakai, irak paankkakai, yellon chenangalukum mikunda aasidvaadamaai kaanappada. En devanake katha udavichivereaga, adu maatrammala, engal sabay makkalile anegar belavinamaa irupade, nagal aarindurukrom, visheshmaaga. Brother Anbalakunudai, andavare, oifukaaku, nagal chabikkrom, katha daame, avergal ippoordeen irukkara idathile, andavari kathaave, belavinamaa irupade, nagal aarindurukrom, anaalum, en devanake kathaal, kodada karim, ontrumai illai, raja. Ipporde deva maikimai irangattum, raja, andavare, sugamalikkum vallamai, irangattum, andavare, avergal bidukalai, aapka, nagal chabikkrom, raja, indha naaliyilum, andavare, ondham deedi engalke neer kodutha vaakuthatham, siraiyil irukkara avergalai, andavare, siraitpatta makkalai, neer bidivikka vallevarame, nagal aarindurukrom. Am andavare, yobu apritthan, than snayadharaka, chabittapadu, thanudhe sirayirpu maritu enduchali. En devanake kathaave, sabayile manegarke sirayirpu irukkalam, en devanake kathaave, neer bidivikka vallevar. Andavari kathaappadi chivereaga, indha naaruudhe chideengalke aasidvaadamaa, amayum. Andavari katha daame, thodamtha aasidvathikke, nagal chabikkrom. Avikurie petturalaka, baharatooda chabikkrom, belakinnagalsorugal, ontru varakkada, pudiyavallamiodu, pudiyapisigathoodu, vamandavari kathaade vaathai, valkamayay, unna vaayindhu prappadu, innum anegamayaran chenangalke aasidvaadamaai irukken, nagal chabikkrom. Ratthathin kottakilindhu sabay muluvadi, nee moodukkalu, aramum mudal, moodiyu parayandhu, deva maikim, inarambe irukkattum, vandha chenangal mikunda aasidvaathoodu, driptiyai thirumbichalla, katharikka nanthikondai challa, en devanake katha udavichivereaga. Meet par esivin mulam chabankelum, nalathagappane, amen.
Amen, amen. Porundhu oru sille paadalkal paaduvoo, katha devadaswaram.
Enakku virothamaaga, ayyatham vaykada. Enakku edhiraga, enthat thittamupalikada. Enakku virothamaaga, ayyatham vaykada. Enakku edhiraga, enthat thittamupalikada. Aargalai nann kada thiduvai, akkinu uudai nada thiduvai. Aargalai nann kada thiduvai, akkinu uudai nada thiduvai. Iduvum ennai thudumadillaiye. Eduvum ennai seetha paduthamudiyade. Oh, eduvum ennai thoduruvadillaiye. Eduvum ennai seetha paduthamudiyade. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Enakku virothamaaga, enakku virothamaaga, ayyatham vaykada. Enakku edhiraga, enthat thittamupalikada. Enakku virothamaaga, ayyatham vaykada. Enakku edhiraga, enthat thittamupalikada. Aargalai nann kada thiduvai, akkinu uudai nada thiduvai. Aargalai nann kada thiduvai, akkinu uudai nada thiduvai. Oh, eduvum ennai thoduruvadillaiye. Eduvum ennai seetha paduthamudiyade. Eduvum ennai thoduruvadillaiye. Eduvum ennai seetha paduthamudiyade. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Ulakil iruporilum, enakkul irupavar periyavat. Akkinu madilaga. Ennai suttrilum kaappavat. Ulakil iruporilum, enakkul irupavar periyavat. Akkinu madilaga, ennai suttrilum kaappavat. Odi nalum melipalayenann, naraalum soorvalavathulai. Odi nalum melipalayenann, naraalum soorvalavathulai. Kadugipola uyara parathiduvaidai. Eduvum ennai thaduthu niruthamudiyade. Kadugai, ola uyara parathiduvaidai. Ennun ennai thaduthu niruthamudiyade. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Idu varai nada thine, ennai inimelum nada thuvie. Kaalgallidaraabal, than karagallal eendhinee. Idu varai nada thine, ennai inimelum nada thuvie. Kaalgallidaraabal, om karagallal eendhuvie. Omal senaykul paandhiduvai, omal madilai thaandhiduvai. Omal senaykul paandhiduvai, omal madilai thaandhiduvai. Enthukudar manukamudiyade. Oru pollapu enkudumathai thodavamudiyade. Oh, vaadayenthukudar manukamudiyade. Oru pollapu enkudumathai thodavamudiyade. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Enakku virothamaaga, ayyatham vaykada. Enakku edhiraga, enthat thittamupalikada. Enakku virothamaaga, ayyatham vaykada. Enakku edhiraga, enthat thittamupalikada. Aargalai nann kada thiduvai, akkinu uudai nada thiduvai. Aargalai nann kada thiduvai, akkinu uudai nada thiduvai. Eduvum ennai thoduruvadillaiye. Eduvum ennai seetha paduthamudiyade. Eduvum ennai thoduruvadillaiye. Eduvum ennai seetha paduthamudiyade. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Payamilla, payamilla, payamilla esiyannodu. Hallelujah, Christ is born. Tamki rubai, peridallol, enjiva nilum adhe. Immatum kaathaduve. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Tarmayullavariyam, thangidu dekki rubai. Tarmayullavariyam, thangidu dekki rubai. Sevai sayyakki rubai tharume. Sevai sayyakki rubai tharume. Tamki rubai, peridallol, enjiva nilum adhe. Immatum kaathaduve. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Nermulamagadum, nerpadum okki rubai. Nermulamagadum, nerpadum okki rubai. Nisanen baavam ninginade, netthiya jivan pettukonde. Nisanen baavam ninginade, netthiya jivan pettukonde. Kathukollakki rubai tharume. Kathukollakki rubai tharume. Tamki rubai, peridallol, enjiva nilum adhe. Immatum kaathaduve. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Nidam adhigaareyum, thirumpudu kirubai. Nidam adhigaareyum, thirumpudu kirubai. Manam thalanda nera thielu, melaviina sarirathielu. Manam thalanda nera thielu, melaviina sarirathielu. Odumeyum kirubai tharume. Odumeyum kirubai tharume. Tamki rubai, peridallol, enjiva nilum adhe. Immatum kaathaduve. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Tamki rubai, peridallol, enjiva nilum adhe. Immatum kaathaduve. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Innum tevai, kirubai tharume. Alleluia, alleluia, aaradhain unmaake. Alleluia, alleluia, aaradhain unmaake. Alleluia, devanake. Alleluia, raachanake. Alleluia, devanake. Alleluia, raachanake. Devadi devan, raachadi raachin, enjenchum nada thiduva. Devadi devan, raachadi raachin, enjenchum nada thiduva. Alleluia, alleluia, aaradhain unmaake. Alleluia, alleluia, aarathunain unmaake. Thunayalaray, thunayalaray, thunmathil thangum manavalaray. Thunayalaray, thunayalaray, thunmathil thangum manavalaray. Kanniraniyiki kaya galachi, kani odu nada thiduva. En kanniraniyiki kaya dalachi, kani odu nada thiduva. Alleluia, alleluia, aaradhain unmaake. Alleluia, alleluia, aaradhain unmaake. Alleluia, alleluia, aaradhain unmaake. Alleluia, alleluia, aaradhain unmaake.
Angeridhi, ippotham poraptarikrakal, aginallu kujinair aavu. Aginallu, namunnu kujinair nalai, adu unna karin, naan, aaradhiththu magidu vayip. Amen? Aandu rethimi thavara siyamada. Amen, namukujinair koodi, irundhu, katharimagivipadutha, oru vayip, amen. Idhalin, namukkashthappadavam ontrumai kadeyadu. Endhanal, edhanal, endhanal kadeyadu, thiriyadu. Agilum, namukkatharimayipaduthva. Kujinair yezhunpinanidhu, aaradhikilam. Glory to God, glory to God. Jesus.
Nanthri baligal seeluthiye naangal, aalayam koodi vandho. Thudipaligal seeluthiye naangal, ummay poorchavandho. Nanthri baligal seeluthiye naangal, aalayam koodi vandho. Thudipaligal seeluthiye naangal, ummay poorchavandho. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Nanmay maravaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Udenpadi kaiyedakuthanthe, undanipillaya thirinthethi. Enne thirinthethi, jivanitha padayal thiruthi vedhi. Udenpadi kaiyedakuthanthe, undanipillaya thirinthethi. Varanathin billum villinrayanai, jivanitha padayal thiruthi vedhi. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maravaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Padigal ennai soothe poothu, setegalale ennai marathii. Padigal illa kaakumbadi, thudakaladupi, uravisayi. Padigal ennai soothe poothu, setegalale ennai marathii. Padigal ennai kaakumbadi, thudakaladupi, uravisayi. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Tevai gal ennai thirinthapoothu, alpudamaga perugavathii. Kanniritha padayal thigathapoothu, nanma niye yathrayanayarthi. Kanniritha padayal thigathapoothu, alpudamaga perugavathii. Kanniritha padayal thigathapoothu, nanma niye yathrayanayarthi. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Nanthri baligal seeluthiye naangal, aalayam koodi vandho. Thudipaligal seeluthiye naangal, ummay poorchavandho. Nanthri baligal seeluthiye naangal, aalayam koodi vandho. Thudipaligal seeluthiye naangal, ummay poorchavandho. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Kattasaidan, nanmay kaaga, nanri seeluthavandho. Namay maralaa, abakirubai, ennaiyathudikavandho. Osena, osena, osena yetha highest. Osena, osena, osena yetha highest. Lord may lift up your name, with a heart full of praise. Be exalted, oh Lord our God, osena yetha highest. Glory, glory, glory to the King of Kings. Glory, glory, glory to the King of Kings. Lord may lift up your name, with a heart full of praise. Jesus, Jesus, Jesus is the King of Kings. Jesus, Jesus, Jesus is the King of Kings. Lord may lift up your name, with a heart full of praise. Be exalted, oh Lord our God, Jesus is the King of Kings. Jesus is my Savior, I shall not be moved. In His love is paper, I shall not be moved, just like the tree that planted by the water. I shall not be moved. I shall not be, I shall not be moved. I shall not be, I shall not be moved, just like the tree that's planted by the water. I shall not be moved. द प्लैनेट बाय द वाटर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड जस्ट लाइक द ट्री द प्लैनेट बाय द वाटर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड जस्ट लाइक द ट्री द प्लैनेट बाय द वाटर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड ओ आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड जस्ट लाइक द ट्री द प्लैनेट बाय द वाटर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड जीसस इस माय सेवर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड इस लव इस फेवर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड जस्ट लाइक द ट्री द प्लैनेट बाय द वाटर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड ओ आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड जस्ट लाइक द ट्री द प्लैनेट बाय द वाटर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड आई शोल्ड नॉट बी आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड जस्ट लाइक द ट्री द प्लैनेट बाय द वाटर आई शोल्ड नॉट बी मूड देयर इस फार फार वंदर वर्किंग फार इन द ब्लड ऑफ द लैंड देयर इस फार फार वंदर वर्किंग फार इन द प्रेशियस ब्लड ऑफ द लैंड देयर इस फार फार वंदर वर्किंग फार इन द ब्लड ऑफ द लैंड देयर इस फार फार वंदर वर्किंग फार इन द प्रेशियस ब्लड ऑफ द लैंड वल्लम्बि उन्दे उन्दे अनुदमल्लाम ये एसु रत्तता नन्मै उन्दे उन्दे अनुदमल्लाम आत्कु तीन रत्तिनाल रत्तता नन्मै उन्दे उन्दे अनुदमल्लाम अलाइव 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 फॉरेवर बोर माय जीसस इस द लैंड अलाइव फॉरेवर बोर अलाइव 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 फॉरेवर बोर माय जीसस इस द लैंड सिंग अल्लेलुया सिंग अल्लेलुया माय जीसस इस द लैंड सिंग अल्लेलुया सिंग अल्लेलुया माय जीसस इस द लैंड ये एसु ये एसु आवरेंतु जीविकिरा एन्तु जीविकिरा एन्तु जीविकिरा ये एसु ये एसु आवरेंतु जीविकिरा एन्तु जीविकिरा तुदि अल्लेलुया तुदि अल्लेलुया एन्ये एसु एन्तु जीविकिरा तुदि अल्लेलुया तुदि अल्लेलुया एन्ये एसु जीविकिरा तुदि अल्लेलुया तुदि अल्लेलुया एन्ये एसु एन्तु जीविकिरा तुदि अल्लेलुया
ओ हल्लेलुया ग्लोरी तू गॉड
एसु जीविकिरा तुदि अल्लेलुया तुदि अल्लेलुया एन्ये एसु एन्तु जीविकिरा तुदि अल्लेलुया तुदि अल्लेलुया एन्ये एसु जीविकिरा
यस ओ हल्लेलुया हल्लेलुया ग्लोरी तू गॉड ग्लोरी तू गॉड ग्लोरी तू गॉड ग्लोरी तू गॉड हल्लेलुया कालम संदर क्लिफर्ड कुमार अवर्गल अडिकेड ओर वर्त जुल्वर ये एसु जीविकिरति नाले नाम जीविकिरा अमेन? द लॉर्ड इस नॉट अलाइव देयर इस नो रीजन फॉर अस तू बी हियर कर्त्र नम्मुडे जीवन जीवन उडल्लाव तल नाम इंग्या वरुगर्दल ओर अर्थमे इल्ले प्रेस द लॉर्ड अनल अवर उयरोड रिक्रतनाले वेदम सोडी रिक्रत अवर एप्पोर्डुम उयरोड इरिक्रवर आनपडियाल नम्मै मुट्टुम रचित्य वल्लवराय इन्दा वसन अंगर के हाँ? एब्रायर 7 25 24 25 ओके? कर्त्र डिपर्चु तोत्र अमेन? अप्पो अवर एप्पोडिपट्यो रायर कर इवरो इन्दा वसन अप्पु दार्भिक रुम्बाजगर एब्रायर 7 अम्मदियार 29 नाल अम्मसन तिले सोल्यूम बोध नसुनिक
इवरो
इवरो
इन्तन्न रक्की निलेख तिरिकरपडिनाले मारिक पोकात असायत्तु उल्लवराय इरिक्रा मेलु
तम्मद मूलमाय
देवनल प्रसेरिकरुल कागर वेंडुदन सैयुपडिकी अवर एप्पोर्डुम सिलोड इरिक्रवर आया अबर्गले मुट्टुम मुडिया रचित्य वल्लवराय
यार के? मेलु तम्मद मूलमाय देवन नडतल सेरिकरुल कुलक इफ यू और आई अंडा वर्ड तिले वर्णवेंडुमेंड जुल्ली देवन नडतले अवर मूलमाय सेरवेंडुमेंड बुरुम्बिनाल बन्दाल अंगर नसुनिक अवर सेरिकरुल कागर वेंडुदल सैयुपडी नामुगलक जबिकर नो इल्लियो वरे यार ओरु रुको निंग जबिकर इल्लियो अल्लाह सैयुमिंडी कटम्मेक अनन नम्मै यार में से या बताल तम्मडतल सेरिकरुल कागर वेंडुदल सैयुपडीक ओ ग्लोरी तू गॉड नार्मन वर्त यान वेंडुदल सैयुपडीक अवर एप्पोर्डुम उयरोड इरिक्रवर आया अवरगले एवरगले एवरगले? देवन नडतल सेरिकरुल देवन नडतल सेरिकरुल मुट्टुम मुडिया रचित्य वल्लवराय इरिक्रा अप्पो नान देवन नडतल सेर देन चुनल अंडा वर्णोकी पोरिन नान एन्ने मुट्टुम मुडिया रचित्य अवर वल्लवराय इरिक्रा एन्न नर्थ कटाल अवर एनकागर वेंडुदल सैयुरा अमेन? चलुगल अवर एनकागर वेंडुदल सैयुरा यार कागर? एथनाले? नान अवरडतल सेरिकरपडियाल अमेन? अदमरतर कुड़ा नान अवरडतल सेरिकरपडिनाल एनकागर अवर वेंडुदल सैयुरा अप्रो अवर वेंडुदल सैयुरा पडिनाल एन्ने मुट्टुम मुडिया मुट्टुम मुडिया नो मुट्टुम मुडिया रचित्य वल्लवराय इरिक्रा यारे? इवरो अमेन? इन्दा वर्त यानक रुम्बाजगर इवरो नर्थ वर्त नक रुम्बाजगर एन्न नर्थ कटाल वेद पुस्तुतल नरिया तिर्कदर्शीगल सोलिरिक विश्वास बीरगल कुर्त सोलिरिक आसार इरिकल कुर्त सोलिरिक नरिया पर्षुत्वांगल पट्टी सोलिरिक अप्पडी नरिया पर सोलिट इवरो अब्ननार्थो अवंग अत्तन पर काटलु इवर विद्यासमानवर हल्लेलुया आंगलतल रुम्बाजगर चुलिक बट दिस मैन बट दिस मैन अप्पो तनुड़ी अर्थन ओर 100 ओर 100 पर सोलिट अड़ति इवर बट दिस मैन चुनन अर्थो अंदा 100 पर काटलु इवर विद्यासमानवर हल्लेलुया ओर मन्सल कुर्त नल्ला कारी चुल्लर नरिया नल्ला कारी चुल्लर नरिया नल्ला कारी चुल्लर अप्रो ओर बट पुट्टमना एन्न अर्थो इदु कुनाल सोनल लत्या दादिच इदु कुनाल सोनल तोन्नत्तुम्ब नल्ला कारी दियो इदो ओरे ओर वर्त इन्दा वर्त बट अदिच अदे पोले अत्तन पर कुर्त वेद नरिया पर कुर्त सोलिरिक अब्बल पर सोलिट एब्रायर 7 अम्मदियार 24 नाल वसन तिक वर्ण बोध बट दिस अर्थो अत्तन पर इन काटलु इवर एप्पोडिपट्यो वर विद्यासमानवर हल्लेलुया करंगल ऊर्ती कुजनेर कर्त्र सोत्री पुम इप्पडिपट्यो नल्ला अंडा वर आराधिकत्तक दान वाइप एनकु उगलकु कुड़त रिक्रा इतने वल्लम उल्ल देवन आराधिक नम्मु कुर्ब कुड़त रिक्रा नेट चिकेट दे पोले ओ ग्लोरी तू गॉड अवर इन्दा एंदा सुविस एंदा सुनले नम्मै कंड कांडर्द मात्रम बल्ला बिड्डुविकर वर नसुल्ली नम्म केट रुकरो मे मोस्ट नडतल कर्त्र सोन वर्त याद दाने एन जनगल पडुगर पाड नान पारकवे पार्ते अवर्गल आलोटिगल निमित्तमा इडुगर कुकोरले केटकवे नान केटे अड़ी पाडगले नान अरिंदर वेदनगले नान अरिंदर रिक्रे इप्पोर्डुम अवरगले बिड्डु प्रेस वर्ड अदा नम्मुड़िया देवन हल्लेलुया अमेन? आगे नल अवर आराधिकर देक नम्म तायंग कुड़ा नयराचे नसुल्ली ननक्यू गुड़ा अवर पाड आरम्बिश तुदिका आरम्बिश नयरम पोर्दे तेरियु कुड़ा तेरियाद मात्रमले तेरिये कुड़ा हल्लेलुया निंग अप्पी नम्बर बुरुम्बरिंग नम्बरिंग ला हल्लेलुया ओ ग्लोरी तू गॉड परिया सल्ला पलिकल पडुप ओल्ड सॉन्ग्स एनुलम देवन बाल पुंगी वर्युदे ये सन्नै रचित्ता आडी पाडुवे एवरुम अरियारे एनुलम पुंगुदे एनुलम पुंगी 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 वर्युदे एनुलम देवन बाल पुंगी वर्युदे ये सन्नै रचित्ता आडी पाडुवे एवरुम अरियारे एनुलम पुंगुदे एनुलम पुंगी 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 वर्युदे इट्स बबलिंग इट्स बबलिंग इट्स बबलिंग इन माय सोल आई एंड सिंगिंग आई एंड डांसिंग सिंस जीसस मेड मी हो नो होक्स कैन अंडरस्टैंड मी नो कैन आई कीप इट क्वार इट्स बबलिंग 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 दे एंड नाइट इट्स बबलिंग इट्स बबलिंग इट्स बबलिंग इन माय सोल आई एंड सिंगिंग आई एंड डांसिंग सिंस जीसस मेड मी हो नो होक्स कैन अंडरस्टैंड मी नो कैन आई कीप इट क्वार इट्स बबलिंग 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 दे एंड नाइट मगिलो मगिलो नीनम मग्गम मगिलो ये सुराजन्नम सोंदम मायना मगिलो मगिलो नीनम मग्गम मगिलो ये सुराजन्नम सोंदम मायना इन्दा पाठलत्तु सोंदकारे अवर एन्दल उल्लत्तु सोंदम मना इन्दा पाठलत्तु सोंदकारे अवर एन्दल उल्लत्तु सोंदम मना चिन्नम चिरुवयल्ल एन्ने कुरितुईता नूरम कोइनुम कंडुकोंदा चिन्न चिरुवयल्ल एन्ने कुरितुईता नूरम कोइनुम कंडुकोंदा तम्मद जीवनै एनकु अलित्त जीवन बेचुकोलन बुरैता तम्मद जीवनै एनकु अलित्त जीवन बेचुकोलन बुरैता आनंदमे परमानंदमे इदुमा पेरुमा दियमे आनंदमे परमानंदमे इदुमा पेरुमा दियमे इन्दा पाठलत्तु सोंदकारे अवर एन्दल उल्लत्तु सोंदम मना इन्दा पाठलत्तु सोंदकारे अवर एन्दल उल्लत्तु सोंदम मना इन्दा सूर्यल्य अवरन् बिनिंदु एन्ने पीरिकाद कासुकोल्वा इन्दा सूर्यल्य अवरन् बिनिंदु एन्ने पीरिकाद कासुकोल्वा एन्ने नम्मी अवर संदपोरु पदरै अवर वर्ग कासुकोल्वे एन्ने नम्मी अवर संदपोरु पदरै अवर वर्ग कासुकोल्वे आनंदमे ओ हल्लेलुया इदुमा पेरुमा प्रेस गॉड प्रेस गॉड प्रेस गॉड आनंदमे परमानंदमे इदुमा पेरुमा दियमे इन्दा पाठलत्तु सोंदकारे अवर एन्दल उल्लत्तु सोंदम मना इन्दा पाठलत्तु सोंदकारे अवर एन्दल उल्लत्तु सोंदम मना एरुपुदल आनुपु एरुपुदल आनुपु इन्दनेरतिले In this moment. The flowers are blooming. In this moment. The flowers are blooming. In this moment. The flowers are blooming. He is the one who is in my heart. He is the one who is in my heart. The flowers are blooming. In this moment. The flowers are blooming. In this moment. Send us the rain, Lord, send us the rain. Send us the rain. Send us the rain, send us the latter rain. The flowers are blooming. In this moment. The flowers are blooming. Oh, Hallelujah, Hallelujah, Hallelujah. The flowers are blooming. We must pray for the flowers. If we don't plant the flowers, the world will not have the flowers. Amen? If we don't plant the flowers, the world will not have the flowers. If we don't plant the flowers, the world will not have the flowers. If we don't plant the flowers, the world will not have the flowers. Amen? We will do it. I will tell you. When I am in love with Christ, I will love you. Hallelujah. Do you believe in him? How many believe in him? We should not live like this in songs. I love songs, I love beautiful songs, I love worship songs. Now, when you ask me, I have a phone in my house. I heard about the songs. I love the songs. Hallelujah. You can sing. You can sing. Sing, don't sing, don't sing. That will transform your life. Your life will change. Our God is good. Amen? We will sing another song. We will sing. Who is it? Isaac Joe. Yeah, he picked me up. Everyone, good things are happening.
Pick me up from the mud grave. Put me on the rock to stay. Pick me up from the mud grave. Put me on the rock to stay. Pick me up from the mud grave. Put me on the rock to stay. Pick me up from the mud grave. Put me on the rock to stay. All my life was in a mess. I thought it's no way out. When I cried on Jesus' name, he gave me a brand new start. Here is the road. Here is the road. Jesus is the rock on whom I stand. Here is the road. Here is the road. Jesus is the rock on whom I stand. I looked at the city. I saw the city. I looked at the city. I saw the city. I looked at the city. I saw the city. I looked at the city. I saw the city. I changed my life. I changed my life. He is the city. He is the city. He is the city. Oh, he is the city. He is the city. He is the city.
When we sing this song, we should experience it. When you look at the city, you see the city. Then, I changed my life. I changed my life. Amen? How many did you do? Why did you do that? Why did you do that? You see the city. Why did you do that? Why did you do that? Do you know why? He is the city. Hallelujah. You see the city. What is it? It's not good. People like it. In the past, in the past, it was said. When a big river came, when a big river flooded, when the house was dug, it was dug. Hallelujah. This is the house of the city. If you understand, it doesn't mean that it will come. It will come. It will come. How will it come?
Jesus, Jesus, how I trust Him, how I prove Him more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust Him more. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust Him, how I prove Him more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust Him more. Yes, it is sweet to trust in Jesus, just to trust His cleansing blood and in simple faith to plunge me in the healing cleansing blood. Oh, how sweet to trust in Jesus, just to trust His cleansing blood and in simple faith to plunge me in the healing cleansing blood. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust Him, how I prove Him more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust Him more. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust Him, how I prove Him more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust Him more. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust Him, how I prove Him more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust Him more. Jesus, Jesus, how I trust Him, how I prove Him more and more. Jesus, Jesus, precious Jesus, oh for grace to trust Him more. Oh, for grace to trust Him more. Oh, hallelujah. Praise God, praise God, praise God, praise God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Taita tingla ille le? Praise the Lord. Nenu parlamma? No oray or palavie? Again, that alive, alive. Praise the Lord. It's the last one before we go into the word of God. Amen? My love. Alive, alive, alive forevermore. My Jesus is alive, alive forevermore. Alive, alive, alive forevermore. My Jesus is alive. Alive, alive, alive forevermore. My Jesus is alive, alive forevermore. Alive, alive, alive forevermore. My Jesus is alive. Sing hallelujah, sing hallelujah. My Jesus is alive forevermore. Sing hallelujah, sing hallelujah. My Jesus is alive. Yesu, yesu, abor entum chivikira. Entum chivikira. Entum chivikira. Yesu, yesu, abor entum chivikira. Entum chivikira. Thudhi allaluyah, thudhi allaluyah. Ente yesu enten dum chivikira. Thudhi allaluyah, thudhi allaluyah. Ente yesu chivikira. All love. Karav tattadukunada, innanthu oru morai pallavi paadiyithe. Thudhi allaluyah, thudhi allaluyah. Okaayi elan tattavani, le kaayi laame alapoyitthu. Allarude kaayi, okay? Pray oru morai, yes. Yesu, yesu, abor entum chivikira. Entum chivikira, entum chivikira. Yesu, yesu, abor entum chivikira. Enten dum chivikira. Thudhi allaluyah, thudhi allaluyah. Ente yesu enten dum chivikira. Thudhi allaluyah, thudhi allaluyah. Ente yesu chivikira. Allaluyah, thudhi allaluyah. Ente yesu enten dum chivikira. Oh, hallelujah. Allaluyah, ente yesu chivikira. Alive. Alive, alive, alive forevermore. My Jesus is alive, alive forevermore. Alive, alive, alive forevermore. My Jesus is alive. Sing hallelujah, sing hallelujah. My Jesus is alive forevermore. Sing hallelujah, sing hallelujah. My Jesus is alive forevermore. Sing hallelujah, sing hallelujah. My Jesus is alive forevermore. Sing hallelujah, sing hallelujah. My Jesus is alive. Sing hallelujah. Oh, hallelujah. Shabba la ba da ra da la bo. Thank you, Jesus, thank you. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus. My Jesus is alive. Oh, hallelujah, oh, hallelujah, oh, hallelujah. Thank you, Lord. Sing hallelujah. Oh, glory to God, oh, glory to God. Hallelujah. Amen? There is nothing so joyful as singing hallelujah to the Lord. Amen? Please sit down. Hallelujah. Are you ready for God's word?
Katthade vaathke yethanivit, ningal aytamai irukkiregala?
Amen.
Nalla sattamaa sonodu.
Amen.
Are you ready for God's word?
Katthade vaathke aytamai irukkiregala?
Amen.
You must be because you have been praising God. You must be because you have been praising God.
Ningal nitchi maay aytamai than irukkiregal karalam, itu varike devane thuditha aaradhitukundae irunda padinaal.
Hallelujah. When we have worshipped God, then it is time for God to speak to us.
Adi devane namodi pese samay aayitthu endartham.
And He is ready to speak any time.
Endavaliyilum devane namodi pesa avar aytamai irukkara.
When we are ready, He is ready to pour His word into us.
Avarade vaathie nammele shuriyatakadaaga, poriyatakadaaga, avar aytamai irukkara.
And when He sends His word, the word of God says, He sends His word and heals them.
Avatamde vasanate anuppi gunamakukarari nde elidirukkara.
It's not only about physical healing.
Adi sariyare prakarum manusugam mathram alla.
When the word comes, it heals your body, it heals your soul, it heals your finances, it heals your education, it heals your knowledge, whatever God has meant for you, He heals everything by sending His word.
Kattharakade devane ungalaki edelam, nanayitu vachirukkaro, adi ellam, adi ellam thisukumakkuvar, katthade vaathie anuppi.
And you saw it, experienced it in a beautiful manner last night.
Kadandharathri le, adi ningal ungal kankoodai kandirgal, anupavitthirgal, kattharkusotharam.
And you're going to do that today also.
Innrengim adaiyay seyya devane daysevaraga.
Don't forget, our first service is not at seven o'clock. It is at six o'clock in the morning.
Maravadihgal, naali, naayi aaradheni kale, armani, yelmani ke alde.
And the second service is at nine o'clock.
Randav service, ombo domani.
So spread the word again, again, and again. So we all will come together to worship God at six o'clock in the morning and nine o'clock in the morning.
Armani kale ilum, naali kale, ma kale, ombo domani nerthulum, nam yaavaru vandha devane aaradipomaga, aaradipu daysevaraga.
And evening worship will be again at six o'clock.
Saaynalakutam karikta armani keerukum, naali raathir.
There will be no youth meeting tomorrow.
Agyal, youth meeting illai naali.
Sunday school nadakum, but there will be no youth meeting. Amen?
Sunday class irukkom, no youth meeting irukkada naali. Aaradhenai irukkum armani ke.
Again, sonu angla, aaradhenai ettemani ke?
Aaradhenai.
Aprom?
Aaradhenai.
Aprom?
Aaradhenai.
Praise God, hallelujah. So it's a great delight to, once again, to have dear man of God, Reverend Doctor Arvind de Silva with us.
Orumarekku de idu periyasandosham namakku, arvinyana devadasan, Arvind de Silva, avergal irupadu.
The more time I spent with him or spent with him or spent with him,
Yebalaneeram avarodu samayam salavalethirukkireno, salavalethirukkireno?
I felt stronger in my body, soul, and my spirit.
Appaladu durathukki enaavi aathmasariyathle, balance adayikaradai unarukkare.
Nine months, I have not come here to lead you in worship like this.
Ombo doma, masathile, ippidi vandhanindu, naa itu varike aaradheni illu ungal nathavillai.
But these two days, I felt that I must lead.
Anaa indharandunnaalum naan ulathil unarthene, naan idai nathavittu menthu.
And you saw that God strengthened me.
Devane ennai balappadthanar. Hallelujah.
That is after eight months.
Etthumathukupindu?
After nine months, actually.
Vashtavathil ombo domathukupindu?
You have seen a different prathapsi.
Ningal oru vityasamana prathapsinga paththirukkiregal endan naan nampira.
Hallelujah. One of the reasons, of course, the Lord has been really dealing with me and healing me and doing that.
Atarku oru karanim enne endu kettal, katthar unmai le, ennooda idai mattukundan, nathikundu than irukkara.
And a very other special thing is that,
Anal, athakattil viseshamana vishim enne endal?
As I said on Friday to the preachers, pastors,
Naan sonnadukola, Friday?
Pastor, Thursday.
Thast, mayaala kalamip, pothakaradu kuttathile sonnadukola?
It's God's time.
Idi katthude veelai.
God has sent His man for this hour.
Indha veelai kaaga, devanake katthar, oru devadasanai nammatthila anuppi irukkara.
Hallelujah. For the past four days, I have been feeling stronger than all the nine months.
Indan ombo domathukathile kaat irunda devada, indha kadandhan naalu naathkar, rembo me, stronger feel pandra.
Hallelujah. To God be the glory.
Kattharkake maagime undavada.
Amen? So without wasting my, any other, any more minutes, I want to turn over the microphone to our beloved, lovable, anointed, God's servant, Reverend Arvind de Silva.
Inimela samaythi vedakkadabdi, arvinyana devadasan, Arvind de Silva, avergalathle, minde microphonea kodukkare. Hallelujah, jayichittho. Vanditthale. Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord, good to be in the house of God.
Kattharkusotharam, katthude aalethi irupadu sandosham.
God will surely amaze you.
Katthar nitchi maagare, ungal aacharitthukulakkuvar.
How many believe God will still amaze us?
Katthar innun namai aacharitthukulai nathavuar ende ethuvaadhi viswaskirigal.
Hallelujah. I repeat, God will amaze you.
Naan marubadi thiruppi sonukkare, katthar namai marubadi aacharitthil aalacheyvar.
The Bible says, taste and see that the Lord is good.
Bedam sonukkare, katthar nalavarran endu ruseethupparangal.
What kind of a taste we are going to have about God tonight?
Indharathri, devane kuthu, ennavidamana ruseyaruseekke pogurukkaro?
We are going to see the amazing working and the wonderful power of God displayed tonight.
Indharathri velile, devane udya ballamayana, aacharyamana, adhisimana, kriyayigale kaanapogurukkaro.
So we are going to see an amazing God moving in our lives.
Agyal, indharathri, namadhi achivyathle, valkele, oru aacharitthukulakkuvar, oru devan, asayvadutale, parkapogurukkaro.
And you will be amazed that God has shown Himself.
Agyal, ningal aacharipadivirgal, devane tammai namakku vedikpadthanare endu.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
How many believe God has amazed generations after generations, year after year, minute after minute, hour after hour, God is still amazing the world, amazing the people?
Katthar, yekka ungalile, ettenepere viswaskirigal, devanake katthar, parambarai parambarai ay, varisha varshamai, over mani neramav, over minute varayim, katthar namale aacharitthukule nathivathivaragara.
Tonight will be no different, God will still amaze you.
Indharathri, vityasamana raathia irukkapogurukle, devanake katthar, innum, inraykum, aacharitthukulakkuvar.
Say it, God will amaze me tonight.
Solunga, katthar ennai aacharitthukulakkuvar?
God will amaze me tonight.
Indharathri, katthar ennai aacharitthukul nathivathuvar?
Say it again, God will amaze me tonight.
Marbadi solunga, katthar ennai aacharitthukulakkuvar?
Say it again, God will surely amaze me tonight.
Marbadi solunga, katthar nitchi maagare, ennai aacharitthukulakkuvar?
Say it again, God will surely amaze me tonight.
Marbadi solunga, devanake katthar ennai aacharitthukulakkuvar indharathriyam?
Say it again, God will surely amaze me tonight.
Marbadi solunga, devanake katthar nitchi maaga, nitchi maaga, ennai aacharitthukulakkuvar?
One last time, God will amaze me tonight.
Oru morai kadaisiaga, katthar innum ennai aacharitthukulakkuvar?
That's why I will celebrate my victory by shouting and clapping my hands tonight.
Agyal than indharathri, kaigale tattie, ennude jayate kondaduva?
Yes, let the celebration begin.
Indharathri velile, kondattam thodangattum?
I repeat, let the, let the, let the celebration begin.
Naan orumarekku de sonukkare, kondattam, nam kondaduvadu, aarparipadu, oru morai ku de endu thodangavada?
Why?
Yeah?
God will amaze me tonight.
Yeah endal, devan, devan, ungal aacharitthukulakkuvar?
Praise the Lord. The way you clapped your hands as if you had tuberculosis.
Ningal kaaydatna de patha, chaayroga vandavan kaaydatnamari iruke?
Somorundu. Yeah, praise Him. He's an amazing God performing tonight. Holy hallelujah.
Devanake katthar, indharathri velile, kriyayigale seyya, namai aacharitthukulakkuvar?
Praise the Lord. Open your Bible tonight to the book of Joshua.
Yooswavin puasathukken nerai, ungal puasangale, Bible thirtikulunga, thirupikulunga?
The first chapter.
Yooswa, one ram adigaram.
Looking at the second verse.
Randavdu vasanathene naan parkpomaga, yooswa, mudalam adigara, randam vasanam.
Moses, my servant, is dead.
Entha sunage, mosey marithupponaan?
Now therefore rise, go over this Jordan, thou and all these people, unto the land which I do give to them, even to the children of Israel.
Ippludhu nee yum indha janangal illaaron, yezundu, indha yoodanak kadandu, israel puturarke, naan kodukkum desathukupongal?
Every place that the soul of your foot shall tread upon, that have I given unto you, as I said unto Moses.
Naan mosey kusonnabadi, ungal kaaladi midikkam, ebbadathayum, ungalakku koduthen?
Praise God.
Praise God.
May the Lord bless us for His word.
Indha vaathke kaaga, indha vaathin moolam, devan namai aasavadi paraga. Amen?
Many of us have read this story.
Namil anegar, indha kade, erkane vaasiththukurukkaro?
We have read about Joshua.
Yooswavin kuthu, nanrakave vaasiththukurukkaro?
The film world has made movies of Joshua.
Indha cinema kadap, padantayirukkara, indha kariyathukuthu, padavidhuthukkara.
The world believes Joshua.
Ulagam, indha yooswavin, nambugaradu?
All the military world believes in Joshua.
Indha ulegathru le, ellaa, military raanava karrargalun, indha yooswavin kariyathte, nambugaraga.
There are, there is a subject in political science called the art of war.
Indha arasyal ulegathle, andha vinyana ulegathle, yuttampannuvadin, kana kalai, endu oru padam undu?
It is called the art of war.
Adarku payar, yuttakalai.
What does it mean is, all the greatest generals, war generals of this world history, human history, have been documented.
Andha, adarun, dharthain endu kettal, the ulegathle, sirandhu vilangia, andha yuttatalavergal, averale kuthakariyam?
Among those great generals who won great victories under impossible conditions, there are two Bible great men that are in that list.
Appadippatta, generalgal talamayinkle, narandhu vettipetthakariyam undu, vedapuasathle, rendu, rendu parakuthing, elidappattukkare?
When I was doing my research in political science, I came across this subject.
Indha arasyal kariyam kuthu, naan aaraychi seyya poludhu, indha pagudikke, indha pagudhe, naan arindee?
The world celebrates Joshua and Gideon as one of the greatest geniuses on the battlefield.
Yuttakalathile, nikathalaisirandhu vilangia, yooswavin, gideonayim, the ulagam, adi arindukkare, kandukundukkare?
Praise God, can you believe in the list of great generals on the battlefield, we have two Bible characters, Joshua and Gideon, as geniuses on the battlefield?
Ningal viswaskirigala, indha ulega sarathra kariyathle, namude vedaputhathil solappatta, yooswavin, gideonayipatti, angai elidirukkare, endu, namuringala?
Why I brought this up? Why I brought this up?
Yeah, indha padapagudiye, naan ungalakku unbaa, vaika vandharkare?
There is a reason.
Oru karanim undadu?
There are some Christian scholars think Joshua and Gideon, who knows, they may be a myth.
Palan, the madat talavergal, silla aaraychi pathi, silla soraga, yartha teri oru veela, ivungandha yooswavin, gideonum, oru kattukavain kariyam lendu, soraga.
How can man stop the sun and the moon?
Yep, adi yeah endal, yeppe di oru manidhan, surianayim, sandraniyayim, nirthi vayka moodiyum, endu endhal?
What does that mean?
Adarun dhartham dan enna?
The sun and the moon are fixed objects.
Sandhranam, surianam, chandranam, adathu sthanangale, nelavareppattu, sthaapikka patta?
But what is moving is not the sun and the moon, what is moving is the rotation of the earth.
Adi, surianam, sandhranam, sutuvadum, aarvadum, thamipadala, dishan, enne endu kettal, bhoomi than sutthikundukkare?
What Joshua did, he stopped the rotation of this earth.
Yooswa seyya kariyam, enne endu kettal, bhoomi, surandri, sutuvadai, nirthina?
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. He stopped it at such a time that the sun, that the earth stopped where the sun was shining on that land.
Andha, sutti, surianadi, ulikka, dir, prakashikkira, nerathle, andha bhoomin mel, andha veelai, bhoomiay, yooswa, sutuvadai, nirthina?
Praise God, that is only once in human history, a man stopped the rotation of this earth.
Indha, ulega sarathra, oru manidhan, surianay, nirthina, endu, idu tha, yooswavin kariyata?
Christians still have a hard time to believe.
Kristavaregalukku, ku de, idan, namba, konja, yoosigiranga?
I was once flying to New Delhi.
Oru, oru samayam, naan, New Delhi ke, palap plane la, poi korundene?
I had a neighbor sitting by my side.
Yan pakkatle, vi manathle, oruvar, kandarundar?
I have a habit when I fly.
Naan ippidi prayaanam, plane la, seyyumuldu, enakku oru parakkum undu?
I open my Bible and read.
Enade vedapuasathathirandhu vaasikpadi, en varekkam?
And the man by the side of me said, I'm very delighted you're reading this Bible.
Appa, en pakkatle, ukandrunna, manidhan, parthu, enakku remba sandoshon, ne vedathte vaasikkarai, endu?
So I asked him, are you a Christian?
Appa, na kete, nee kristavanaa?
He said, no, I'm a Hindu Brahmin, and my family are having a temple in Banargata Road.
Avar sonaarindha, oru kuriputta roadla, naa Hindu tha, ya, Brahmin koduma, ya koduma tha, oru, koyil vachikkaangal, sonar?
I said, wow, I said, how did you get interested in the Bible?
Na appa kete, nee Hindu vaayirundhi, ippidi vedapuasathathukuthu, ungal, eppidi aasa vendudu, vanjji vendudu?
He said, I was in the United States years ago.
Palavasigalukku unbaa, naan Amerikavalayirundu?
And a bunch of scientists were called from all over the world to place satellites in space.
Andha, ulegathru le, ellaa vinyanigal, mangai alakkeppattu, the satellite, eppidi, the wind velile, vayipadendu, kuthu, discuss panna, vandhundaragala?
Because they did not want the satellites to collide with one another while it is revolving.
Andha satellites, galan, the wind velile, prayaan seyyumuldu, unnoorundu, modik, modik kulla, kudadi, endu, kuthu, oru, kutamadu?
There are few brightest scientists of the world that we invited to come to NASA.
Andha NASA, endh edathirke, ulegathle, sirandha, vinyanigal, vara vallikkeppattundaragala?
He said, I was one of them.
Adala, naan oru ala, irundene, endu, avar sonar?
And he was the ISRO chairman at that time.
Avar than?
Indian Research Space Institute.
Andha Indian, ISRO? ISRO udya manager, director, chairman, irundhar, avar than, the man than?
So, he was one of the greatest men in the world.
Indha ulegathle, oru periyam manidharagala, oru varavara?
He was sitting by my side.
Andha periyam manidhan, en pakkatle, ukandarundar?
This is what he said.
Idat, avar ippidi than sonar?
He said, we all found the calculations.
Nam ellaa kanakugale, sariyaga, kanakaga, parthu uttom?
But there was one day and twenty-three minutes and a few seconds were missing in the, in the great system.
Naangal, indha kanakugala, parthu vandhavudhu, kandupidutha, oru kariyam, enna endu kettal, oru naal, and, adodu, oru sila, mani, thuli?
One day and twenty-three minutes.
Oru naal, and irvathimoon, nimudangal, missagadu, tapmadu, poi vittamai, thonudhu, endu, sonaga?
They found that somewhere the earth is missing one day and twenty-three minutes.
Appa, avar kandupidtharagala, yedho, indha bhoomi, sutuvadale, oru naal, irvathimoon, nimisham, adi, missagadu, adu, oodavillai, endu, kattu, endu, sonaga?
They said, how did the earth rotation miss one day and twenty-three minutes?
Yeppe di, indha bhoomi, sulalvadu, sutuvadu, oru naalum, irvathimoon, nimisham, yeppe di, adu, missagamoodiyum, endu, kattaragala?
There was one scientist, who was a Christian scientist.
Angai, oru kristava vinyani, irundan?
He said, in the Bible, I heard a story when a little boy, Joshua, stops the rotation of the earth.
Andha vinyani, sonar, naasurup payanai, irukkumuldu, vedathle, solappattukkare, indha kade, kete, yooswa, surianay, surianay, nirthina?
He stopped the rotation of the earth.
Bhoomi sulalvadu, sutuvadu, nirthina, endu, vedathra, naan paadi thirukkara, endu, sonar?
When they put the calculation, now they found the one missing day.
Appa, thiruppi, avar kanakku, setthuppanni, parkumuldu, oru naalum, irvathimoon, nimishamum?
He said, where is twenty-three minutes missing?
Appa, enga, indha irvathimoon, nimisham, illamal, poi thu?
Then he said, when I was little boy, they said, God heals Ezekiel, the king, with a sign of ten step backwards, and that was calculated in the shadow of the sun, twenty-three minutes.
Appalda, marbadi sonakariyam, Esakyaa, gunamana, peragu, kattharkatina, oru adayalam, irvath, patthu paagak, pinnettu thirminadu, angai rekoda, irukkare, naala, andha irvathimoon, nimisham, adi illamal, poi thu?
So, so they put the calculation back into the system.
Marbadi, mandhassistathukula, avarulde kanakala, setthupandala?
And for the first time in human history, man could place satellites in space without colliding with one another, and they found that missing data from the Bible.
Agyal, appalavara, kandupidtharagala, indha, ko, ko, satellites, la, unnoorundu, modik kulla, adabdi, idithukulla, adabdi, sariyaga, pokathakada, indha irvathimoon, nimisham, angai, missanadu, endu, sonaga?
Why I brought this up tonight?
Idai, yeah, naan ungalakke, endi, kisollavande?
People think this Bible is a myth, a story that is not relevant, and some of the stories are bogus.
Nerayapere, nennekkaradu, enne endu kettal, indha Bible, oru, kade, oru fiction, madhri, idala, ulladu, unmai, illai, endu, nennekkaraga?
But I want to tell you tonight, everything in this Bible is accurate, is on time, and, and what Jesus said in the book of Revelation is also on time.
Naan viswaskiridhi, enne endu kettal, indha vedapuasathle, solappatta, vopvandrum, unmai, viseshamaga, vedikpadthan, viseshathle, solappatta, kariyam?
Praise the Lord. How many are glad we are holding the most powerful document ever given to mankind is the Bible, the holy word of God.
Ettanepere viswaskirigal, manukulathukke, devan kodutha, oru parisutha vedapuasathka, ungal kaayile, endukkaregal, endu?
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Joshua is now being commissioned to take over from Moses.
Mosey kupinnale, poruppettun, nathivathuvaran, indha yooswa.
God appoints Joshua to take over from Moses.
मोसे नर्थले रिंदे, कार्यते पोरप्पे, योशुवा मेथ, येत्कुंडन नर्थत्करान.
I remind you, Moses had sons.
नान उम्मुलक न्याप्पड्ट्टकरे, मोसे के कुमारर्गल इर्दारगे.
But Joshua is not the son of Moses.
योशुवा मोसे इन मगन अल्ले.
Then why did God not choose Moses as son?
ये, ये पिन्ने देवन, मोसे इन कुमारर्गले तेरिंदरुकबिलाई?
Why did God choose Joshua?
ये देवन, मोसे, योशुवा वाय तेरिंदरुतार?
There is a reason.
अदरको ओर कारणमुंडे.
In the first war Israel had after coming out of Egypt.
एकुप्ते बिट्टे वेलियवंद परगे, मुदल युद्धत्तिले, इश्रवेलर्डन मत्तिले.
It was with the Amalekites.
अमलेक्केरलोडु दान मुदल युद्धम नरंददे.
And Moses found this young man closely following him.
अंदर मोसे कंडुपिड्टा कार्यम एन्ना केटल, इंदा योशुवा, अवरले नर्कमा, गवनमागे पिन्नोडुरा, एन्दे अरिंदुकुंडा.
His sons were not near Moses.
अप्प, मोसे ओढ़ा अंदर बैले ले, मोसे इन कुमारर्गल कुरे इल्ले, नर्कविल्ले इदरकार.
Joshua was the one, a stranger, closely following and observing Moses.
इंदा अन्यने पोलेरकर कुमारन अल्लाद योशुवा दान, मोसे इन कार्यमले उन्निप्पाय उठ्टु, नर्कमागे गवनित्ते, सैलप्पट्टावन.
Praise God.
हल्लुया.
So Moses got acquainted with Joshua's face.
आग्याल मोसे अवन अवन, योशुवा ओढ़ा अधिक नर्कम उदय अवनाय, कानपड्डरान.
He told Joshua, "Raise an army and fight the Amalekites."
आग्याल अंदे योशुवा वाय एल्पी, इंदा अमलेक्केरलोडु युद्धमन्ना, मोसे सोल्गरान.
Because when Moses came down from the mountain with the tablets, Israel had sinned.
मोसे कक्पनलगिकलोडु, मले इर्दे इरंगिन्नु बोल्दे, इश्रिदल चनंगलांगे पामम सैदारगे.
So Joshua was helping Moses up the mountain.
आनल योशुवा, मोसे ओढ़े मले इले, एरी पादिदूरत्ल उकांद, काट्तुकुंडरदा.
He did not go all the way up.
अवन मले उछिवरेके मोसे ओढ़े योशुवा पोगुल्ले.
Moses went up, Joshua stayed in the midway.
मोसे मले उछिवरेकी पोनार, मले इन पादिदूरम वरे, योशुवा सिंदा अंगे काट्तरंदा.
His sons were, Moses' sons were not with him.
मोसे ओढ़े कुमारर्गल अंगे इल्ले, एन्दे एल्डीरकर्दे.
But Joshua stuck with him.
आनल योशुवा, मोसे ओढ़े पिन्नोड़न्दे नरिंगे, पादिदूरम वरे मले इले काट्तरंदा.
Moses said, "I didn't call him, I didn't choose him, he's voluntarily following me."
मोसे सोल्लले, नान अवन तेरिंदु, तेरिंदु उल्लेखले, नान अवने आयेक्केले, अवन तानागदे, इदे चेय उन्नवंदरकरान, एन्दे सुनार.
And then Joshua helps Moses in certain duties.
आग्याल मोसे के पाला कार्यमले, योशुवा उदवी से दान, एन्दे एल्डीरकर्दे.
And he was still following Moses.
अवन तोड़न्दे मोसे विन्बच्चि, तोड़न्दे से दुंडे इर्दान, योशुवा.
Joshua and Caleb are the only two who brought good news in the midst of danger and said, "We will conquer the land."
अंदर योशुवा वाय कालयवम मट्टनदान, अंदर इकट्टान नेलमयले, नल्लसे दिसुन्ना रंडे पेर.
So Moses had that in the back of his mind.
अदे मोसे तन मनिदले पाइत्रंदा.
He was not afraid of problems.
अवन ओर नालम, प्रश्नले कुंडा, अंजिकर अवरो, भाईपड्डुकर अवरो, अल्ले.
He was not afraid of the giants.
अंदर राज्यतर्गले कुर्तु, भाईपड्डुकर अवन अल्ले योशुवा.
He did not look at the obstacles.
अंदर तनक नेहरागे इर्दत ताडेगले, योशुवा सिंधिकेले, गावनिकेले.
Joshua told Moses, "We will conquer the land, we will win the land."
आनल मोस, योशुवा विदम, योशुवा मोसे इर्दन सुनार, नान निच्चीमागे, अवरले जयक्क मुड़ियम, एन्दे सुनार.
He saw the giants but he ignored the giants.
अवन राज्यतर्गले कंडांदान, आनल अवरले अवन केयर पन्नवे करयार.
God found a man.
कत्तर ओर मनिदने कंडुपिड्टा.
Who never highlighted obstacles, who never highlighted danger, who never highlighted problems.
बालकिले, अंदर सुनलिले, ओर आपत्तयो, ओर येदिर्प्पयो, ओर कार्यत्यो, परिसाकी पेसादा ओर मनिषने देवन कंडुपिड्टा.
God found a man who did not care what mountains, what problems, what obstacles, what dangers. He paid no attention to that, he said, "We are going to conquer the land."
देवनागे कत्तर गवनित्ता कार्यम, योशुवा येन्दा आपत्तयम, येन्दा ताडे कुर्तु, योस्तुकुंडरकाद, ओर मनिदने देवन कंडुपिड्टा, अवन सुन्ना कार्यम, निच्चीमागन नामिते जयपोमेड़.
Close to my dad's retirement.
एन्नुदे तकपना रिटर्न आग्रसमयत्ला, अंदर बैले ले.
Few years, maybe four years left.
ओर नाल वर्षन दामी दीर्दुको.
He was a central government employee.
अवन सेंट, अवर सेंट्रल गवर्नमेंटले ओर नाल ले वेलिसी दवर.
And mom's had a vision.
अप्पु दान.
My mother had a vision.
एन्नुदे तायारको ओर दारसनम कंडदे, कंडारगे.
That she had to build a house.
अवरले दान नीटे कट्टविंदम, एन्दे ओर दारसनम.
We were living in the officers' quarters of the Indian Railways.
अंगे इंडियन रेलवे सुल्ला क्वार्टरसले नामल कुड़ियर्दो.
It was a big nice house, it was for the officers, it was a great place.
अंदर अधिकारिगले कंड्री नल्ल, वसावगरीमान वीडुगल दान, एन्ने.
So, mom had a vision of building a house.
अप्पे इन्नुदे तायारके, वीड़ कट्टुवदागा ओर दारसनते कंडारगे.
Dad says, "How can we build the house now? Why didn't you tell me before I retired many years ago?"
नि इप्पे इप्पड़ि इंदा वीटे कट्टाल, इप्पसोलरिये, रिटर्न आर्थक मुन्नाले, सोलीरकुरादा, एन्दे केटल.
Anyway, she said, "How are we going to buy the land?"
अप्पा अवर सुनार, यप्पड़ि नलत्ता मांगपोरो.
So there was a place in our area.
यंगडे पगुदि ले, ओर यड़ा इर्ददे.
The plot was, a plot was on sale.
अंगे इंदा यडन विर्पनकी, एन्दे अरिंदो.
Mom said, "Let's go buy that plot."
अप्पन नम्मा पोय अंदा यडत्ते, नलत्ते मांगोमेन, एन्दे तायार सुनारगे.
So dad's first, "Where is the money?"
अप्पा यन तापना सुना, अंदे यडत्ता मांगे यंग पाना.
She said, "That is not your problem, that is my problem."
अप्पा अंदा अम्मा सुनांगे, अदु उन्गा प्रश्नले इल्लया, अधिकयम प्रश्नन्दे सुनांगे.
Money is my problem.
पानम, एन्नुदे प्रश्नाय.
My father always handed the paycheck of, of his, every month to my mother.
यप्पड़ि मे एन तकपना, पेचक को वंदुने, पानते नम्मा ताद कुड़पार.
And when he wanted money, he'll come and say to his, to his wife, "I need some money."
अप्रे यनको कोंजे पानम वेयनुन्नु केपार.
I said, "Papa, you earned the money, why you want to beg from your wife?"
नीरदानया अप्पा, नीरदानसंपादिकरिंगे, यंगुट्टा वंदी एन्ना केकरिंगे, एन्के पांगे अम्मा.
He said, "When you find out that your wife is spending less and saving more, give her the whole money."
उम्मा मनेवी, अधिकमा सलवलिकामा, सेगरची वक्किरा, सेमिकरान सुना, उम्मा पान एल्लाति नर्यावे कुड़ूंगा.
So many wives wonder, "Why is my husband not giving the money to my hand?"
आनल नर्यामनेवी मारको ओर केल्वी, यां कानवन, यां यंगुट्टा कास कुड़कमाटिंगरार.
Because the husband found that you like to spend the money, you cannot save money.
अप्पन दानवन कंडुपिड्ट्या कार्यन ना, नि पानते सलवलिकरता नापातिंगे, सेमिक्कमाटिंगरिये, अदनाल्ता कुड़कर्दि.
How many wives are going to prove from today, "I'm going to save money, come on and spend less."
उम्मा मनेवी मार्गले, उम्मले यथन्मे तीर्मानिकरिंगे, ईनीमे, नाह अधिक सलवलिकामा, कोरच्ची सलवलची, पाना सेमिपे, एन्दे.
When your husband finds out that you love to spend less, he will give all the money in your hand.
उम्मा कानवन, उम्मल अंदर नेलमे पाकुमुदे, यल्ला पानते उम्मल कायले कुड़त्रुवारे.
So dad gave the money to her.
आनल एन तकपन, एल्ला पानते नम्मा ताकुड़त्रांगे.
So dad put on his clothes.
अप्पे यन अप्पा ड्रेसला पनिटे, पोटार.
I also said, "Papa, can I come?"
अप्पन नाजेटा अप्पा, नामुकुड़ा वरट्मान नाजेटे.
He said, "Come on."
सरिवा अप्पड़ि दान.
So we went.
नागु पोनो.
We got the application form for the plot.
अंदर यडम वांगरदुकान, विन्नप्प पडिवत्ते वांगिनो.
We filled the form.
नागु अंदर विन्नप्प पडित्ते, नरपीट्टो, एल्जिट्टो एल्ला.
And daddy kept the form on the table.
अंदर पडिवत्ते, अंदर एप्लीकेशन मामे, टेबल वच्चारिंग अप्पा.
And he began to read his newspaper.
अवच्चट्टे, न्यू, पत्तिरिके, दे से दित्ताल वासिक्का आर्बिच्चा.
So mom came to him.
अप्पे अम्मा अंग अप्पाट्ट वंदर.
"What are you doing?"
इन्नया सीरीड़े.
"Go buy the plot."
पोय नलत्ता वांगिट्ट वांगे.
He said, "Where is the money?"
यंग पाना इर्के, अप्पिन केटार अवर.
She went inside the, the safe.
अप्पा, बीरोक उल्लप्पयि, अंग आयनसेफ तरंदा उल्लप्पयि.
And she had cash money to buy the whole plot.
अंदर मुल नलत्ते यम, यडत्ते वांगतकदा, मुलप्पड़मा दमा सेमिच्चोच्चिनांगे.
My dad's eyes became so big.
यंग अप्पा उद्देखन, अप्पे मुट्टकन्न मारी वेडिच्चा.
He said, "I made the right decision by giving my paycheck to my wife."
अप्पा अवर सुन्नदे, एन्नुदे संपात्या, एन्पेचकला, यम मनेवीत्ता कुर्तु, सरियाना कार्यम दाने.
Praise the Lord.
हल्लुया.
Then we bought the plot.
अदे कप्रो अंदे यडत्ते वांगिनो.
Then.
अदे कप्रो?
Dad again began to read the newspaper.
तिर्म्बा अवर न्यूस्पेपर पडिगार्मचार.
He said, "Let us fill papers to start building. Let, let us start building."
सरिन नम्मा इनी, इदा कट्टरम, दाकत्ता आर्मी पोमेन, एन्दे सुनारगे.
Dad said, "I cannot go to the bank, I close, I'm close to retirement, they won't loan me the money."
यंगुट्टा पानम करयादे, बैंकले कास कुरे नार रिटर्न आयते, एप्पड़ि पानम कडेकमेन, एन्दे सुनार.
Mom said, "That is not your problem, that is my problem."
अप्पा मर्पड़ि एन तायार, एन्दा पट्टा सुनांगे, अदु उन्गा प्रश्नले अल्ला, यम प्रश्नाय.
He said, "How can you approve a loan?"
नि यप्पड़ि ओर लोन, यप्पड़ि अवंग, कुड़पांगे, दनेले.
You don't, you don't own a bank.
उनके बैंक पानम करयादे.
You don't own a bank.
नि बैंक उनके, निसंदमागा वायकेले, इर्केले.
Then how can you approve the loan?
नि यप्पड़ि, लोन सैंक्शन मन्नमुड़ियम?
She said, "That is not of, none of your business, that is my business."
अदु वाम वेले इल्ल, अदि यम वेले, मर्पड़ि एन्दे सुनांगे.
So dad did all the formalities. So dad did all the formalities.
Aynalasayevendesila karigangale, enga appa sayidharu.
And mom said, go ahead and give the application.
Yeah, ippo poya, andavina paparidhethu kodupang.
So I went with my dad again.
Naathirumum, enga appa udaiyekkuudaponai.
I said, Papa, what do you think about your wife?
Appat, enga appadakidai, unga manavi kuruthi, enna idiyavichirigenge, enna nanakirige.
She said, she has some secret in her hand.
Avar sunnare, ava kaila yedhovrakushinirukka apinnar.
Went to the bank, the loan was approved.
Anga bankukpona, anga loan sanction manikodutthanga.
So he came back.
Aynalavandanga thirupi.
He said, how do you know all these things?
Idella unakkiyepri teriyuvanikkeetan.
He said, when God, he said, when God said something, count it done.
Avanga sunnakariya, devan orukarteshunnal, adu appriyeyenadakun sayivaranidu.
You should not look at obstacles.
Neepri devan solirikumode, tadegaleyum, kurayaleyum, neepakakuradu.
How many know God tells Joshua, go over the land?
Ungalke etten merkutere, devan, yosavathu, poi, nelathai, sudandritthukolindis, epsonnavarindutereema ungalke?
The word go over means go forward and not backward.
Neepoi nisunnal, munneri poi chayipinnanga, min, pinneiri pogade, edaatham.
Praise God, don't go backwards.
Neeporunnal, pinnadainthi pogade.
Don't stand still.
Neepri chumvaavonikkaade.
He said, go forward.
Neepunneri, munnalai, po.
Praise God, hallelujah. When God, when God told Joshua to go forward, God did not tell him, he'll meet the Jericho wall, he'll have the Jordan river, he'll have so many obstacles.
Devan, yosvay pathi, neepoi, nisunnavaridu, unakkayeri gokota varu, yordhan nadi kurandu varu, enthalasolavayil.
God never tells you the problems you are going to face. All he tells, go forward.
Devanakekattan, nammatthal urupodum, indha tadegalum, idarulkalipatti solave mattar, solvadu undu than, po.
Praise God. But we funny people, you know what? We tell God all the obstacles.
Namma vedikianal, yanketta, yappaparandadadegal, edharpugalathap eswum, paapum.
Some of us are very good in imagining things.
Namil palavekarpanaseethu pakrathala sharanavanga.
Even if it is not real, we'll make it real inside our head.
Adi netjamavae illa nakuda, nama mindla, adan netjamma padampidichu vachirupom.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Like I said the other day.
Naanandike sonnadu pola.
You know, there are some folks.
Sila perikaga.
They look at the husband's face, they look at the wife's face, when they go to the market, she's always looking at the husband's face, and she's, and he's always looking at the wife's face.
Marketukpombe, sila per, sila per, kanavan, epodum manavi mugathey, patitrapar, manavi kanavan mugathey, patitrapar.
They are looking at each other's face.
Oruvarude, oruvarmugathey, patthukkade, irukkaram.
I researched that problem.
Adi innanthakariyansulip, kunja araichis.
So finally, I asked people, I asked couples.
Sila kanavan manavi, marijodi, gale, nassila keldiketa.
When you're going to town, why are you looking at each other's eyes?
Nega kadaki pombodo, townukpombe, ya, ovvarukannak parkerirgal.
I want to make sure he's not looking at some other girl, I'm making sure he's not at some other woman.
Yenkeetan, indha kanavan, dariyendappunney, pakkaadukkumadiyaga pakare, averu solre, indha manavi, dariyavani, pakkaadukkaraalan pakare, athinallatho, oruvarkannay, oruvarkaparo.
Why they are looking is because they are imagining already that she is looking at the man and he is looking at the girl, already imagined.
Yaipri seyrangankeetan, yarkenave, manusala karpaneseethu vachstanga, ivantha, ivalathapakara, ivanathapakaraan.
They already built the storyline in their head.
Yarkenave, andhakave, undaaki, karpaneseethu, vachstanga.
They made the movie of this affair before the affair was real.
Andhakariyam unmayakumunnalayee, adu orupadamapidichu manusala vachstanga, yarkanave.
You know, we, some of us are very good in making movies inside our head called imaginary movies.
Nammella, very, rambasiranavanga, ethalathereema, yarkenave, illada karayata undakun, oru cinema padamma, manadela vachirukkara.
Praise God, hallelujah. We are the greatest screenplay writers inside our head.
Namam manadela, nammala sirundae, elutthalarigal, kadivasana eludukkaram, cinema padayedukkaram.
Praise God, hallelujah. We are always imagining problems and obstacles all the time.
Namipuludanamdisubhamayenndiketan, epuludum, andhena, namakidurayukkare, prachanegal, tadegal, idaya kuruthu than sindana.
Hallelujah. When God told Joshua, you are going forward, carry the people over the land of Jordan, and cross over into the land of Israel, into the promised land, hallelujah, God never told Joshua the problems.
Devanakekattan, yosvavathu terindaduthu, unjanangalekutikkundi, indha yordhanakarantukointhu sunnabode, devan, orukkalum, orupodum, varappograpprachanegal, tadegalekututhu solave illa.
All what God wants is a person who will say, yes, Lord, I am going forward, and I don't care what obstacles, what dangers I face, I am going forward.
Devan virumbukaravore, manushin yarindiketan, neep solirikri, poi, nde, naan poveenithavara, prachanegalyum, edharpugaley, naan nokkiparkamate.
Now the secret, why does God not tell us all the problems we are going to face in the ministry, in our marriage, in our church, in our lives, in our families?
Yeendevanakekattan, namde, udiyathilo, kudumbathilo, velayino, adhirkava, inimel varappograpprachanegal, prachanegalakurithu, yeendevanakekattan, nammatthal solvadi illai.
Because he has already taken care of all the obstacles, of all the dangers, of all the fears, he has done, taken care of it, before he told you, go forward.
Neepoi nisolvadukkumunnalayee, devanakekattar thame, varappograpprachanegal, edharpugaley, illavathikurithu, puruppiyettukundar, athinallatho, unnee solradalana matta.
Praise the Lord. Hallelujah. Years ago, God told me, I'll be preaching in the capital of Goa, Panaji, and I'll be preaching a crusade in the Azad Maidan.
Pallavarsimal kunbaga, devanakekattan, Goaala, Panajiandadathile, nee prasangpundu, vaikusayaduthu, vaidh, solirunda.
That big stadium, that big ground was called Azad Maidan.
Azad Maidanam, enre, andh, periyanda, arangathukappayar.
And about eighteen years later, I had a stroke.
Andh, adhakappurav, padunattu varsimal kuyuthu, enakkoru, stroke vendadu, kaigalvillundakadi.
It was in two thousand.
Adh, randa, varsam, randaayaram, two thousand.
And the doctor said, this looks a bad case.
Appa, en doctor sodichis, ramamosamana case, nisunnav.
So they did what they did and sent me home.
Agyal, ethala, ennanasenmasedithi, enavuikantvita.
And he said, it'll be a long time before you'll be able to function.
Neemmarupadiyam kaigalala, sailpudukkare, neriyakalamagundan, nisoliyanvita.
But he said, it does not look good.
Anavunray sunnargal, idanalla, teriila, pathathasunnavanga.
So eleven thirty, they brought me home from the hospital.
Paduntra manikke, nee hospitalandhu, vittukondavandanga.
So, my daughter was four years old, Sandra was her name, she said, Dad, Jesus told me, tomorrow morning, you're going to play with me.
Appa, enudie, nalvaysimagal, Sandra, ava, ennapathusunnav, Appa, yes, nadrenathal sunnare, naaliki, ningennodu, vellayadap, back, back.
Play, play with me.
Ennodu vellayadapogarirgal, nisolare, nisunna.
I could not talk, I could, you know, I could not reply.
Naavalkupadalsalamudiyathan, neelya irundhe.
And I thought, my life is over.
Naanandixa, avaladha, inayunna illa, jiviyathil.
I forgot what God told me eighteen years ago.
Devan, annaki, yelvarshathukumunnalasunnavare, adana marunditha.
Eighteen years ago, what God told me, I forgot.
Padunattu varshathukumunnal, devan sunnade, na marunditha.
At about twelve o'clock that afternoon.
Andh, matthiyana, panirundumanikupinnale.
He said, get ready to preach at Azad Maidan in Panaji, India.
Appa, var sunnare, nee endrichandhazad maidanathuk, poi, prasandaman, yelundu, ayathapadu, nisunnav.
And I'm looking at my body of stroke.
Appa, epri kaigalpulunduponan, neelamey, ensariyathathan, na paap.
God says, get ready to preach the crusade at Azad Maidan.
Devan sunnar, andhazad maidanathal, poi, prasangaman, ayathapadu.
All I said, yes, Lord.
Naasunnadala, unney unda, okay, yes, Lord, nindhanu sunne.
But do you know, within twelve hours behind, when I went to get prayed in a church, God healed me completely.
Ungalke, ungalke, terima, ten hours.
Twelve hours.
Panirundunnerathukulla, panirundumaninnerathukulla, devanakekattar, enne, puranama, isukumakina, hallelujah.
Praise the Lord. God knew I was going to get a stroke.
Kattarukkutariyum, yarkenave, epri oru, stroke varum, enre.
But he told me eighteen years ago, you'll be preaching that crusade.
Aynal, padunattu varshathukumunnalay, engittaddevan sunnare, neepoy, andh, crusade la, prasangapandhuvan.
And do you know, after that?
Adhirkappyarag.
Praise the Lord, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
I came here to this church.
Adhakappurana. Andh, randaayam, varsam, randaay, two thousand, da, adhakappur, idesabekinam, ande.
Praise God.
Hallelujah.
And then I preached the crusade at Azad Maidan.
Adhakappur, sugamana parag, azad maidanathle, naan prasangitha.
Praise God.
Hallelujah.
So when God called me years ago, forty-six years ago.
Padunappathar varshathukkumunbaga, devan, enne, udiyathukalaitthupode.
He said, you're going to do my ministry, you're going to travel all over the world, this is what you're going to do.
Appa, andhavayarkenave, ennekusunnav, nee, udiyam sayipogarai, ulagamuluvadum, prayanasayipogarai, nindrum sunnav.
And he said, I will take care of all your needs.
Unadetthavagaleyellam, nam sandipen, nisunnavar, devan.
You take my responsibility, I'll take your responsibility.
Ennudie, naan unakkukoduthapuruppeyavale, nee say, unakkathavayana karigale, naan puruppeyathukkule.
Your responsibility, I'll take, and you take my responsibility.
Unudie uttaravaththi, nee ertukkori, ennudie uttaravaththi, naan ertukkori.
My responsibility is take care of you and your family.
Ennudie uttaravaththi, ennandiketan, unneyum, unkudumbathayum, paramaritukkulvathu.
I said, yes.
Sorry, nisunnav, naam, andhav.
And I learned a lesson.
Appalu oru partthepaditha.
What God wants from every one of us.
Nammil, yallarkatthilundum, devan, enna virumbukararo.
All we need to say, yes, Lord.
Ad, enna, niketan, sorry, andhavare, okay, andhavare, nisolvadaithan, devan, nammatthalundu, virumbukarav.
I am ready to go forward.
Naan, unnalay, munnerichella, ayatham, nisolvadaithan, devan, virumbukarav.
I will never again speak about obstacles and dangers and make imaginary problems.
Naan, orukkalum, orupodum, varappograpprachanegal, edharpugaleyum, kurithu, naas karpanaypanni, yosithukondi, athil kavanam, selthamate.
How many are going to deal with your mind tonight?
Indhakariyathukuruthi, ettenbertharathiriveelile, adhik, adhunodu, idaipadapogarirgal.
What is stopping you from going forward and seeing your miracle is your mind is standing as an obstacle in your journey.
Ungalke, orappograprapuvaaththi, yadai, adayade, padi, kadaikaparadapadi, adhirkavirodamana, tadegaleyum, edharpugaley, ye, unga manadela, ninakirirgal, karpanaypannukirirgal.
Your own mind is your own obstacle.
Ungalke sondainda, mana, neelamey, ungalke varigaram, mudal, tadai.
You're building problems, you're making problems that are not there, making it real inside your head, and you are stalled, you are stopped, and you're not going forward.
Illada dayum, irukka pogada dayum, karpanaypannisindathukondi, irukkardanaale, nee, munneri pogha, muddiyaville, adala, unaitaduthu.
Homnia say, Lord, I'm tired of being still, I'm tired of being like this, I want to move forward, not tomorrow morning, I want to start moving forward now.
Ungalke, ettenberthirmanikke pogarirgal, ettenberth solapogarirgal, naalavara, na katthurukamate, innarathiridane, yedayyintadegaley, yosikka, nee, sunnabadi, unneri pogave.
Hallelujah. How many are ready to cast down those imaginations from your mind?
Ungalke, ettenberthi, indh, manadhal thoodukkara, karpanay, karigangale, talivida, ayathama, irukkare.
Hallelujah. If you're ready to get rid of the imaginary things, obstacles you've built in your head, God is now ready to lead you forward.
Ungal, manadela, ninga, undaaki vachirikara, karpanay, tadegal, edharpugaleyilla, yenthanertle, talivida, akattivida, irukkaregal, andhanertle, devan, kriyayasa, yavalarai.
Hallelujah. One more minute.
Orunamisham.
Homnia ready, say, Lord, I'm going to take out the movie I created called obstacle movie in my head.
Andhavare, yammanusala, yarkenave, undaaki vachirikka, karpanay, padam, cinema, vay, naan akattapogare, nisolukkare.
Hallelujah. I have made my own movie of obstacles.
Indhattha, enakk, ulathadegaleyilla, karpanaypanni, yarkenave, oru cinema padam, mari vachirkena.
How many are ready to get rid of the obstacle movie we created in our mind?
Namde, manadela, naame, urvaki, vachirikara, andhakarpanay, illada, andh, tadegaleyilla, ettenberth, akattap, ayatham.
Hallelujah. Only few people.
Kunjapirdana? Ettenberth, ayatham, andhakarpanay, karigale, manadhey, akattu.
Hallelujah. Homnia say, Lord, I'm ready to move forward tonight.
Innarathri, nee, sunnabadi, naamunneri pogha, ayathama, irukkare, nandhi, ettenberth, solukkare.
Praise God, hallelujah. I will not again speak about my problems or obstacles or dangers.
Naan, ini, orupodum, inimel, avathukkalo, edharpugalo, tadegalo, adhikuruthu, pessave, mate, nindhethanberth, tirmanikke.
Hallelujah. Praise the Lord.
Thank you, Jesus.
You just heard Pastor Pratap Singh's testimony.
Ippa, konjanathukumunnal, pasipratapsinghude, saachikettirgal, ellaba.
His body, the fact his body became weak.
Unmayana vishem, nandiketan, avadusariyaram, belavina, madainthu.
He said, about nine months, his body was weak.
Ombarumadunkalukumunbaga, avadusariyaram, balavina, mayindudu.
But now, he said, he is most strengthened than ever before.
Andh, ombarumastukupinnale, ippa, solrare, yerdeshariyaram, monbikkaati, lappalamay, irukkaregal.
What has caused him to bounce back?
Avar, epri munneri, varavatthakadhanadu, adhirkay, edhikarnama, irukkadu?
He did not look at his body weaknesses, he looked to the God of his strength.
Avare, tan, sarira, balavinangal, kurithu, kavanam, selthamal, tan, sarirathayum, tanneyum, belapputtukkare, kristuva, nokkipatha.
I repeated again, he did not look at his weakness, he looked at God's strength.
Naammarupadi thirupi, solukkare, tan, balavinathile, nokkam, vaykamal, kavanam, selthamal, paramal, tanney, belapputtukkare, devanay, nokkipatha.
He looked to God, his strength.
Tanadhye, belathukaga, devanay, nokki, avarkatha.
Hallelujah. How many believe Joshua knew, go over the land, I'm going, I don't know what obstacles, he faced obstacles, but every obstacle, Joshua conquered.
Yosvavake, ennatadegal, edharpugale, varum, nindhi, teriyadurundhalum, yella, tadayum, vandha, yella, edharpayum, avar, merkundu, jaita.
He conquered.
Avar, jaita, vettibettan, yosvav.
Hallelujah. How many are ready to conquer your destiny tonight?
Ye, ungalke, ettenberth, ungalke, kattar, nimuthakariyaththi, adayipudiaga, yella, athayim, jaypirgal, merkolvirgal.
To conquer your destiny, your appointed plan of God.
Ungalke kaale, devan, neemikappattanda, latchukkare, kurikappattatittam, adai, pettukolvirgal, jaypen, nindhi, ettenberth, visvajikirige.
Homnia say, I am now ready to move in the plan of God.
Ungalke, ettenberth, ippa, solamudiyam, devan, enakkavachitthatittathay, kinnearaga, naan, oda, ayathama, irukkare.
God has revealed my future.
Kattaragay devan, ennudie, edhirkalaththi, enakkavellipadthirukkara.
God has revealed my future days.
Enudie, edhirkala, avathukkalo, karigangalo, avaththay, indh devanakekattar, enakkavellipadthirukkara.
God has not revealed the problems of your future, God has revealed the blessed future.
Kattar, ungalke, edhirkalathil, varappograpprachanay, vellipadthavillai, arumiyay, sirundha, oru, few, edhirkalam, irukkardi, enbadayay, vellipadthi.
Hallelujah. God will now bring you into the blessed future that God has appointed you.
Yarkenave, devan, ungalke, neyamitha, nimikappattu, vachirikara, aachiradikappattu, oru, edhirkalaththi, ungalke, tarukkara, nindhi, ettenberth, visvajikirige.
What is the delay?
Ye, thamadam, thamadam, enna?
We say words that bring out only problems, negative things, in our mind is problems and negative things, and that is the delay that God has.
Thamadikpadhirkakarnam, enndiketan, ungal, manadela, illada dayum, tadegaleyum, ningal, karpanayseethu, vachiruppadanaala.
How many are ready to expedite your journey to the blessed future that God has for you?
Kattaragay devan, ungalke, neythirukkara, arumiyana, edhirkalathukaga, tadegaleyilla, akattivittupovane, nisolukkare, avgal, ettenberth?
Hallelujah. Stand to your feet.
Ningal, elundan, nillungal.
Praise God. Heads bowed.
Taligalay, vanangi.
God is saying tonight.
Indharathiriveelile, ungalke, devan, sulukkare, nindhi.
Go forward.
Munneri pogal.
You get ready for your journey.
Ungalke, yatrae, prayanathukaga, ayathamagundu.
The land that you are now standing on.
Ningal, kaalvaththi, midhitthirukkara, indhat, boomiyath, desaththi.
In a, in a few more moments, you are leaving that land.
Andh, edaththi, ningal, inun, silamma, nemishangale, adayvirgal.
In a few more moments, you are going to leave that land.
Andh, edaththi, vettupogapogarirgal, inun, orusila, nemishangale.
Hallelujah. You're come close, your journey has now begun to move forward.
Ningal, ungalke, prayanaththi, thodangathukkada, andh, edaththi, ningal, vandhun, nirukkare.
Can we all say, Lord, I have made up my mind to never confess obstacles and problems, never to think on obstacles and problems, now I am going forward with absolute clear mandate and vision. Hallel, I'm moving forward.
Ungalke, ettenberth, solamudiyam, devane, neer koduthatharisonathinpadi, sonnamudhi, naamunneri pogave, yenthanadegaleyum, edharpugaleyum, naan, nokkiparkamate, nandhi.
I want everyone to make this confession.
Ungal, ningal, ovvarukkam, indharikke, sayivandam, nandhi, virumbukare.
Lord.
Kathavay.
I'm moving forward.
Naamunneri, munnela, munnalay, pogare, andhav.
I'm packing my belongings.
Enudie, udamegalilla, naan, packpandhi, naan, unnerichella, ayathama, irukkare.
I'm not talking about your personal belongings.
Ungalke sondaga, udamegalakpati, naan, solavellai.
Halit talks about your inner man, I'm talking about.
Ungalke, ulanam, manushin, neen, neelamegalakuruthu, naan, pesukkare.
I'm talking about my mind.
Enudie, manadhey, kuruthu, naan, pesukkare.
Your body wants to move forward.
Ungalke, sariram, unnalay, pogavandam, nindhi, virumbukare.
Your mind is saying, slow down, there is danger and obstacles.
Aynal, ungal, manadhu, soludhi, valigale, avaththukkara, akyal, konjalsloppandhun, soludhi.
Lean not to your own understanding, don't pay attention to your mind, it will destroy you and slow you down.
Unudie, nyanaththi, charndirade, adu, unney, keelnokkam, meduva, narakkapunath, taday, undakkum.
Ready?
Suyputhiyachara, adilpayaga.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Let us all make up our minds tonight.
Indharathiriveelile, namellar, oru, tirmanam, edukpom.
Jesus. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
God has already finished your planning.
Devan, yarkenave, ungalke, kuruthathittaththi, naravetthi, mudichittaru.
He finished the planning before you were born.
Neen, indh, ulagathle, pirakkumunnalay, kattar, unthithaththi, mudichivittar.
Before you have formed in the womb of your mother, God said, Jeremiah, finish the plan, you are already a prophet.
Taayin, karpathile, urvagumunne, eremyay, pathusunnav, kariyadhan, yarkenave, pitthangaleyilla, unakkandhi, nimutha, mudichite.
Before you have formed in your mother's womb, Jeremiah, I finished you as a prophet.
Neet, taayin, karpathil, urvavathukkumunbaga, nee, oru, peekatharasiyaga, unenam, mudithuvitthi, seethuvitthi.
Hallelujah.
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 God has completed your planning.
Devanakekattar, ungal, thithaththi, mudithavittar.
Your marriage that you're waiting for, God has already finished the planning, prepared the man and the woman to bring it to your door.
Nee, unakkandhi, narakkapograptrumanaththi, kattar, yarkenave, sayidu, mudichittaru.
Hallelujah. Whether it's a job, or a wife, or a husband, or a future, whatever, God has finished that planning.
Unakamasi, oru, devi, velayo, oru, kanavan, oru, manaviyo, edhuvay, dalum, devanakekattar, yarkenave, adi, seethuvutthitar.
Now God is about to bring it into reality.
Ipplidh, yenai, kattar, adhinnatay, muraila, neerlam, konduvarapora.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Homnia say, Lord, I'm repenting tonight.
Ungalke, ettenberth, solukkare, andhavare, naan, manan, virumbukare, nindharathiriveelile.
I will never speak about obstacles.
Naam, orunnalam, tadegalekurtu, na, pessamate.
I will not speak about problems.
Prachanaykuruthu, na, ini, pessamate.
I will not think about obstacles.
Naam, enakk, edhuragavirakadegale, naam, yosiththi, parkamate.
I will not create and invent problems and obstacles in my mind.
Enndh, manadela, illada, tadegaleyilla, urvaki, karpanayseethu, na, ini, vaykamate.
I am now moving forward.
Ipplidh, naam, munnerichalukkare.
Who have I in my mind?
Ipplidh, en, manadhel, yaray, vaythirukkare.
Only God should be on your mind.
Devanakekattare, ungal, manadhel, irukkavandam.
When you put problems and obstacles in your mind, your peace is gone.
Ungalke, tadegaley, edharpugaley, ungal, manal, vaypirgal, annal, ungalde, samadhanam, agandupoyud.
Isaiah twenty-six, let's put God back in your mind and you'll get back your peace.
Yes, I, iruttarav, unusoludhurudhi, ungal, manadhey, devan, bairala, vayga, puranama, samadhanam, kadekam.
How many are ready to invite God back into your mind?
Ungalke, ettenberth, ayatham, devanay, athadegaleyum, adigal, manal, vaykathupadi, adhirkapadhalaga, devanay, vaythukkula, ayatham, nandhi, ettenberth, yosikirige.
I know you have invited God into your heart.
Enakkutariyum, ningal, devanay, ungal, ehrathle, yarkenave, aleythu, vaythirukkare.
But you have not yet invited him in your mind.
Aynal, ungal, manadhel, ningal, ye, inum, andhavare, yeddu, vaykavellai.
Homnia go, say, Lord, my mind is now your dwelling place.
Ungalke, ettenberth, solamudiyam, kattavay, en, manadhey, neet, tangi, irukkum, vasasthalam.
Come on, pray with me.
Appa, enodu, koduchavam, pannunga.
Say, Heavenly Father.
Parlogapidave, soladu.
I come to you this evening.
Ummatthil, indh, sangal, vallale, naan, varugare, nallasoluka, paramapidave, indharathiriveel, naan, ummatthal, varugare.
I am giving you my mind.
Enudie, manadhey, illavuthi, naan, ummada, kartle, opukudukkare.
I invite you to come into my mind and dwell there and stay there.
Andhavare, kattavay.
Kathavay.
Ummai.
Ummai.
En, manadhel, varavalathu.
Manadhel, varavalathu.
Adhithangugura, vasasthalamay, vaythukollu.
Tangugure, edamay, matt, vaythukollu. I have made, I have made up my mind.
Naan, en, naan, tirmanam, chethirukkare.
Tirmanam, chethirukkare. I'm going forward.
Naan, unneri pogave.
I'm going back to preaching.
Naam, marupadi, muriyasayipogare.
I'm going back to do what you called me.
Edarkaga, aleythiro, adhiksayidhava.
I am taking back my responsibility.
Enudie, uttaravangali, enudie, enudie, uttaravangali, naan, marupadiyam, porupthuthik, kaila, edukkare.
Homnia ready not to resign, not to retire, but say, Lord, I'm coming back to take my responsibility.
Ungalke, ettenberth, solamudiyam, andhavare, naapodu, avaladha, nivittuvadamate, neer koduthath, uttaravaththi, kaila, edukkare.
Hallelujah. Ready? Are you ready?
Ayathama, ayathama.
Hallelujah.
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 Amen.
Let us take back our responsibilities, let us not talk about retiring or resigning, God is ready to give you your strength to move forward. Glory to God.
Na, indh, velayilindala, oivadukkamate, oivadukkathirmanukkamate, neer koduthathale, seethakraga, naan, munneri pogha, ayathama, irukkare.
Hallelujah. Ready?
Ayathama.
I want to start thanking God for the new strength, new courage, to move forward.
Enakkad, devan, arulugara, pudiyabalan, pudiyadaiyaththodu, kuda, naan, munnerichella, tirmanikkare.
Come, let's start worshiping God and thanking God.
Adh, adhik, soli, adhirkaga, nandri, nisoli, devanay, aaradhipomaa, nandriyaya. Thank you, Jesus. Pudiyabelenthukai, nandri, pudiyadairiyathukai, nandri. Hallelujah.
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 Aaradhipo, aaradhipo, ellasolub.
Listen, when you lift your hands, don't lift it shortwise as if you had a stroke. Lift your hands high, those are hands to worship, I taught you this week.
Ningal, ungal kaygalayuyathupodhi, strokevandhamari, pathi uyaramandha, muludhumaga, kayal uyathukkada.
Because those hands are objects of worship.
Andha karangal, uyathirakarangalilla, adai devane aaradikrakariyam.
Hallelujah. Lift your hands and let's start worshiping God.
Kaygalayuyathi, devane aaradhipo, hallelujah.
The strength of God is now coming upon you.
Devanake aavyaanavat, ipaldhi, ungal meela varugara.
The courage of God is now going to be deposited in you.
Devanake daiyam kodukkam, daiyam, ungal meele varudhe.
The strength of God and the courage of God will come in the form of the power of the Holy Ghost coming upon you.
Devan kodukkara daiyam, belan, idinale, devanake aavyaanavat, ungal meele varugara, andha belaththakutthu.
All we need, say, Lord, fill me with the Holy Ghost. Who has courage? Come on, who has courage and strength for my journey?
Ningal ellar vaaythirudhi solukkare, oh, hallelujah.
Glory!
Daiyam.
God is pouring His Holy Spirit, filled with strength and courage.
Hallelujah.
Glory!
Glory to God.
Devanake kathar.
Oh, hallelujah.
Glory!
Thank you, Jesus.
Jesus.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah, hallelujah.
Get ready!
Hallelujah.
God is pouring His Holy Ghost power, which has strength and courage.
Daiyamam, belanam udaya, aavyaanavari, ungal meele kathar, ujichikundarukkara.
The river of the Holy Ghost is now flowing in the house of God.
Devanake aayithu.
Glory! Oh, God.
Hallelujah.
Yes, Lord, yes, Lord.
Hallelujah.
Praise God, praise God.
Those who have not been filled with the Holy Ghost, God wants to fill you tonight.
Satikkeeligay, parshutthavyal nirappappadadurukkare ungalay, kathar nirappumadiaga, aavyaanavat, indha aayithukule, pulindu vandharukkara.
In the Holy Ghost power is courage and strength coming upon you tonight.
Parshutthavin belan, yedhi ennandikettal, daiyamum, belanum arulugra, andha aavyaanavat, ungal meele varugara.
Lift and say, Lord, I thank you for filling me with the Holy Ghost, filled with strength and courage.
Kaygalayuyathi, indha daiyamam, belanam kodukkara, aavyaanavat kaga, devane makkustotharam, devane stotram.
Hallelujah. Worship God, worship God, everybody, start thanking God. The river, the river, the river of the Holy Ghost is now flowing in this assembly. It's coming to your door, it's coming to your place, it's coming to your life, it's coming into your body, it's coming into your... Hallelujah, yeah, it's overtaking you.
Thank you, Jesus. Daiyamam, belanam kodukkara, aavyaanavat, indharathirivalayle, indha aayithile, yellar meelam, varugara, ujichikara, aasirvadikara, belanparuthukara. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Glory to God.
Hallelujah.
Nalla thudithukundeyirigal, 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 thudithukundeyirigal. Aavyaanavat nirappipundurukkara, aavyaanavat ovvarvarin nirappipundurukkara. Receive it, receive it, receive it, receive it, receive it, receive it, receive it.
Your glory!
Pettukolukkay, 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 pettukolukkay.
Your glory!
Pettukolukkay, ipaldhi, nallan, nallan.
The river of the Holy Ghost is flowing.
Parshutthavyalo, nirappappadigal, nirappappadigal, nirappappadigal. Glory to God, glory to God, glory to God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus. Ellar, ellar, nallavil nirappumigal, anney paashigalikathatharugarid, pesungal. Avar pudiyapudiyapuasigalikathandukundurukkara. Pudiyapudiyapuasigalikatharugara.
Glory, Lord.
Porabashak.
Lord. Pour your strength, pour your courage in the form of the baptism of the Holy Ghost.
Oh, hallelujah.
Say, Lord, fill me, fill me with the Holy Ghost.
Soligay, nirappum, 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 antavare, enni nirappum, enni nirappum, enni nirappum.
God is filling you now.
Antavare, chenengal, nirappum, antavare, nirappum, 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 nirappum. Ellak kettidirigay, kettidirigay, nirappum, nirappum, nirappum. Vadi thodugirapadi, nirappum, antavare. Glory to God, glory to God, glory to God.
Go forward, the river of the Holy Ghost will follow you.
Munnerichellu, parshutthavin vadiyal, munnerichellu. Glory to God. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Thank you, master.
Glory be to God.
Oh, hallelujah. Praise the Lord.
Listen carefully, we are going to close very soon.
Nam sikritthile mudikepogurun, nandray gavaneegal.
You made up your mind to go forward.
Ningal munnerichella thirmanithirukkariigal.
Only for those who have made up their mind to go forward, not to resign, not to quit, but to go forward, now the river of the Holy Ghost will follow you all the days of your life.
Yarallam, na ninil, velaylin, na yen chaykukoodiyu uttarothundu, veligukollamattay, naan pinvanga mattay, nan munneri selluvay, ennath soli, thirmanipirigalo, ungal meel parshutthavyanavat, nadiyayvadiyiranguwa.
God will baptize you in the Holy Ghost.
Kathar ungalay parshutthavinall, nirappuwa.
Hallelujah, those who are weak, say, I am strong because the Holy Ghost is being poured on me.
Parshutthavyanavat meel varupurathanale, nan unday kaatilum, bellavanaay, bellavattiay irupen.
Open him out then, say, Lord, fill me with the Holy Ghost.
Antavare, enni nirappum, ennath keeligal, nirappum, nirappum, nallakkeeligal.
Say, Lord, I am hungry, I am thirsty, I want the Holy Ghost tonight.
Antavare, na rompa thagabai irukkare, parshutthavyanakidthavay.
Yes, he's being poured on you.
Avar ungal meel thammay ujichikundarukkara, parshutthavyanavat ujichikundarukkara.
The devil of uncles will be part of the people in the name of Jesus.
Hallelujah. Nallavil nirappipesungal, nirappipesungal, kathar paarthigalikatharugara.
Lord, I thank you.
Glorabashak.
Lord, I thank you. Your healing will be given as the Holy Ghost is being poured on you.
Parshutthavyanavat, ungal meel ujichappadumpodude, ungalakku sugaththay madhunodseetharua.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
All those who are sick in the body, say, Lord, fill me with the Holy Ghost.
Yarallasugaviinamai vandhrukkariigalo, soligal, antavare, enni nirappum, ennath soligal, kathar ungalay sugaththay tharua.
Those of asthma, those who have breathing problems, say, Lord, fill me with the Holy Ghost and you'll breathe better.
Asthama udayavargay, moochithenaravargay, indha neerathile kathar sugamakukkara, unudiy moochithenaralay maatsukkara.
Glory, hallelujah.
Yesuvin namathinale.
In the name of Jesus.
Yesuvin namathinale.
In the name of Jesus.
Yesuvin namathinale.
Every lying devil of sickness and disease and fear, come out of the people now. It is just the same.
Indha aayathurulay, yella manishinudiy, sarirathurulay, pyadigalum, ipaldhi, yesuvin namathinale, ninguvadaga.
Now let's clap our hands and shout for victory.
Nallakkarangalathatti, jaitthi tandha devanathuksothrungal chollu.
Your clapping hands tells the devil he lost the war.
Ningal karangalathatti, satthanadi, yuddhamudithuponudhi.
Yeah, clap hands, all you people, clap hands, all you people. And say, I am clapping my hands, God has given me victory.
Katharakidjaita koduthurukkara, katharakidjaita koduthurukkara, yedhiyevindhatupidukkari.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Glory, hallelujah.
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord.
Glory, hallelujah.
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. Glory, 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 glory. Hallelujah.
Your healing is now.
Yidhu ungal, ungaludiy sugamipodude, vandhrukkare.
Your hearing is complete.
Ungaludiy kaadhal, tharakappadukkare.
Your lungs are healed.
Udhey durayirigal, tharakappadukkare.
Your weakness has left you.
Udhey bellabinigal, ungalavittan, ninguvidukkare.
Your fear has left you.
Udhey bayamugalavittan, ninguvidukkare.
Then send a message to Satan. Send a message to Satan.
Satthanukkore message anupigay.
How do you send a message to Satan?
Satthanukke, eppidi ningal, oru message anupigirigal.
God said this word, clap your hands and tell the devil he is defeated.
Avan thorkadigapattu, shathru, ennath, karanthi soligal.
Clap your hands and say, Satan, you are defeated. I am celebrating my victory.
Satthani, nee thorkadigapattavani.
Glory!
Nee thorkadigapattavani. Hallelujah. 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 Yedhi kattal, namukkavairenna jaimal. Amen? Nam jaitavargay. Soligal, naan jaitavan. Tholvi yenukki illai. Nan munneri selluvay. Pinne nookiparkamattay. Indha varthi yana kakaave. Devan yana kakaave. Indha paarthigalay anuppinar. Nan appidi yedhukundan. Avar tandha aavi pettukundan. Andha aavin belathinall, nan munnerichella pogare. Yes.
Move on, brother, move on, sister, this is the moving day. Move a little closer, take your stand with Jesus, move on, brother, move on. The move is on, the Lord is moving on, the move is on, my Lord, the move is on. I am in the mulberry trees, I know, I know, I know, the move is on. I hear the rustle, the mulberry trees, I know, I know, I know, the move is on.
Ellar serthu.
Munne selluvom, nam ellarum, mutselum nalidu. Innum kocham selluvom, yesu pakkam nirpo, munne selluvom, nam, mutseluvom, nam yesu selkira. Mutseluvom. Muusukattay chediil, hasayum osay, thoni padalin, mutseluvom.
Hallelujah. Indha paatlinudiyadi, we are going to sing that one more time. Yenandikettal. Mulberry tree, muusukattay chediil, hasayum osay, ennath thirimanikki? Enna osayeniki? Huh? Munnalapova. Hallelujah. Pinnalanookipakkaade. Tholvie pakkaade, adi englishle, porukpa. Mu, adi ennath solukkai? I hear the rustle in the mulberry tree. What do I hear from the mul, in the mulberry tree? Don't stop, don't go backward, move forward. Hallelujah. That is what God has already spoken. Avar sonnakariyam unnuthadepadadhy. Hallelujah. Nallakkarangalavirti karangalathatti, epridala padumdi.
Move on, brother, move on, sister, this is the moving day. Move on, brother, move on, brother, move on. The move is on, my Lord, the move is on, the move is on, the Lord, my Lord, the move is on. I hear the rustle in the mulberry tree, I know, I know, I know, the move is on. I hear the rustle in the mulberry tree, I know, I know, I know, the move is on. Muusukattay chediil, hasayum osay, thoni padalin, mutseluvem. Muusukattay chediil, hasayum osay, thoni padalin, mutseluvem. Muusukattay. Thoni padalin, mutseluvem.
Hallelujah. Glory to God, glory to God, glory to God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. I definitely believe, na nichchayamai namukkare. Ningal yini pinnookiparkamattay. Amen? Yenandikettal, namukkusodandrikke, oru desamukkare. Kaal vaithin desamilla, yen katharukkusundamak. Vasiththavasan, nyamurka? Ne kaaladi vaikkira, ellar edathayum, unakku, appa kaaladi vekkayidhamaana, nishidhama. Nikkarathitalindha, ninidhundam, mudiyaadhi. Munnalapoyitthay irukkana. Amen? Kathar ungalasiruchirukkara. Indha belathodepogay. Ungalukkikadita, indha belathoday, soligal. Indha belathoday, indha belathoday, nan purapputtupogare. Yenudiy manasile, movies vekkamattay. I really like that idea, movies in your mind. Amen? Soligal, nariyaparukum, manasile, oodhuladhi, nariya. Amen? Soligal, yenudiy manasile, yinime, movies vekkamattay. Nan directoravu irukkamattay, nadiganavu irukkamattay, nadigiyavu irukkamattay, yenudiy movieilla, appidiyeyeduthu, thooki erigare. Suksaigal, appidiyeduthu thooki erigay. Thooki erigare. Hallelujah. Karangalathatti, katharimayipodukkara. So, orumuray, once again, I want to thank you for bringing such a powerful word, for bringing people back to where they need to be and where they need to go.